Before we address our agenda for the evening, I should take a moment to just recognize the loss of one of our Camden's followers, and that is Harold Drinkwater, who passed away last week at the 89 years young. I had the misfortune of not knowing Harold very well, but I have read a little bit about what he did and how he has done. He's just another person we have that has given our town extraordinary service. The man provided, I think the number is about 65 years of total service to the town of Camden. In 30 years as part of that, as Assistant Chief and 19 years as the Fire Police Member. During that time period, Harold had worked at the Knox Woolen Mills for 38 years. And God bless him, he was active with the town, showing up at the Public Safety Building every morning between 6:00 and 6:30 for coffee and breakfast daily until March, when unfortunately he had to stop because of COVID and the shutdowns we've had. But I'm sure I could go on forever. In 2013, the town had named a fire truck, Engine Four, which was new at that time, in Harold's name. Given his level of service to the town, I'm not sure that's enough, honestly. And we should probably look at other opportunities to commemorate his huge amount of service. And I thought, the person who moved the room that Padra and I are sitting in spent 42 years in service to the town. I thought that was a lot, but Harold, God bless him, spent many more than that. And as a town, we are obviously very grateful and want to extend to his wife Dorothy and family our sincere condolences. And we know that we recognized the extraordinary service of this individual to the town. So with that, I will proceed to our agenda. Our first item is any public input or non-agenda items? Yes, I don't believe we have any.
We did not.
Thank you. Then we have to address the approval of the Board Minutes from November 17, 2020. Do we have any comments on the minutes, Mark?
I have no objections to the minutes as they are now, so unless somebody else says, I'll make a motion that we approve.
There are a bunch of typos and little spelling things here and there. I didn't mark everyone. I think somebody just needs to give that another read, and it should be obvious, but...
We can address that. Do we have a second for Mark's motion?
Second.
Okay, so hey, Allison, would you like to just do a review for typos?
Yeah.
Is there anything else besides that that you've noticed?
No.
Okay, so Mark, I guess your motion is correct.
Why don't I amend the motion to approve the minutes and have them gone over again to see if the typos can be corrected?
Just things like wastewater, you know, waste or comprehensive plant rather than comprehensive plan, just things like that. Second.
Okay, okay, with that qualification, I'll do a roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Bob, aye also. Thank you very much. Going into our action items, we have five. The first one is the approval of Siemens' project plan. With us tonight, I will introduce Denny Weber, who was on here Zoom. And Denny, I want you to introduce yourself and also your team members and your respective roles on this project. And you're getting muted.
There he goes.
That's better.
Sorry about that. Okay, so yes, my name is Denny Weber. I'm the Market Manager for Siemens Infrastructure. I deal with municipalities across New Hampshire. And I have two of our energy engineers here with us, Colleen and Elmer. And if they want to talk, they can, but they are the ones that have been working on this projects for about a year now. So they're the technical brains behind all of this. I'm here to try to explain it the best I can, and they're here to help me, so.
Yes, my name's Elmar Arbogast. I'm a project developer for Siemens. And I've been in this business for, well, since 1992, so about 28 years now.
And I'm Colleen Fitzpatrick. I'm an energy engineer. I've been with Siemens about eight years, first in the Measurement and Verification Group, and then as an energy engineer for the last two years.
Okay, Denny, you want to take us into the information in our packet?
I can do that, yes. So I'm going to give this a try. We don't typically use Zoom, so this is, I'm going to give it a shot here. Okay. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, perfect. Okay, so kind of just to recap a little bit. So as I mentioned before, we've been, we started talking with Bob, Audra, and Dave and Dave about a year ago in regards to, and kind of to start with an energy audit specifically. We get talking about, you know, energy audits and basically how performance contracting is included with, you know, we could do a performance contract and we could talk about doing a, you know, an IGA, which would be an investment grade audit to dig down deep into all the buildings and listen to all the concerns and the kind of the direction that the town wants to go in with the buildings that are there now. So if anyone is familiar with performance contracting, so I'll kind of fill you in quickly here. It's basically a performance contract is when an ESCO like Siemens, an energy service company, comes in, identifies designs and puts in energy savings measures throughout buildings to help drive down the energy costs and utilize the savings to help pay for a project. The way I like to describe it is it's a good finance mechanism to get projects done within the town that whether it's new things, existing issues that you might have, or things that you wanted to do, but you just haven't got around to maybe exploring. So what we do is we come in, we do an IGA, an investment grade audit. We list out all the things that we see. We take all the information from, you know, Dave on the facility side, current, you know, issues that you're having, things that have to be done. And we're able to pull that into a project and give you kind of a selection tool on things that make sense to try to roll into a project. And then we provide the savings, which are guaranteed savings, that we provide for the life of the project. So the advantages to a performance contract, it's a turnkey design-build approach. You guys pick the project. We don't come in and say that you need to do this, need to do that. We make recommendations on why you'd want to do certain things, but ultimately you make the decision based on your budgets. Again, guaranteed savings, what we put in place and we tell you you're going to have for savings is guaranteed for the life of the project. We monitor that every year to make sure that we are hitting those savings, and there's no change orders. So if we decide on a project tonight and we have the numbers showing what you guys are going to be looking at for savings or contribution, whether it be contribution being above and beyond the things that you guys have to get done in the town that aren't energy savings, we don't come back if there's something that we missed. So we forget $100,000 worth of things that we should have known before we started this contract. If it's something that we would miss, that falls on Siemens, we would have to cover that. So there's no risk to the town for change orders, which is a big deal. That's kind of the things you run into with a planned spec approach, because usually you have someone else engineering the project and someone else actually installing it. We take full ownership from start to finish of the project. So that being said, we've done, we started this a year ago. We did the audit, we come up with all the measures, and we listed it out in the slide deck to kind of give you an idea on what we see as probably a first, second phase kind of approach. As you can see, like Siemens takes a phased approach to this. First, we start with a reduce. We figure out how to reduce your energy costs, how to drive down your, you know, your current spend and get the buildings up to par, to where they should be. Then we look at the procure approach, which is how do we help you reduce, procure energy better, save money on that front of it as well. And then, of course, the last thing would be produce, which would be, is there a way to help you come up with alternative energy options to help be less demand from the grid? You know, less, more resiliency, I should say. So those are the types of things we do with this product, with this project. And then, of course, you have, this is all monitored throughout the life of the project, right? So every year, we're coming in, taking measurements to make sure we're hitting those goals that you have. Okay, so first location that we had was the Opera House Town Office. First off, did anyone have any questions on a performance contracting? Did I hit all the points? Is that, did it make sense? If there was any questions, please just jump in at any time, so. So first location, Opera House, change out all existing lights to LED. Kind of a normal thing that we would do, first thing we would do in these projects. Second, building envelope. So this building specifically has, when it was designed, it was made to allow moisture to kind of travel throughout the building. As things changed throughout the building, those barriers, they create barriers for moisture to get out. So it kind of wants to run up the walls from the water that you're seeing in the basement here that's constantly running through. And it has to travel throughout the building, all the way up the walls and through the roof. So with this, you're going to run into a problem of not being able to do much with the attic in insulating purposes, because you'll trap the moisture and cause more damage. So this is kind of what that basement would look like with a membrane down there that we're recommending. Similar to this, of course, right? And then, of course, there'd be a floor on this, so you could actually utilize this space as well for any kind of storage, you know, capacity that you might need. But this is kind of the design. This here will solve the moisture problem in the basement and stop that moisture from traveling up through the building. Second portion, you guys have already started, the gutters. The gutters were a big problem. That was also causing leaking in the walls, more moisture. That's been resolved. You guys are just finishing up that portion of it. But the last portion would be to fix that roof, to stop the leaking. Once these things are under control, then we can start looking at this next phase, which would be to maybe insulate that ceiling to help get more efficiency in that building. But we like to take this in a phased approach to try to control these things, the moisture first, before we start moving forward. O2 Prime. O2 Prime is a new technology, well, it's not really new, but it's a technology that's obviously become very popular lately with COVID. It's a system that can be attached to your current automation system. It helps, it's been proven to eliminate 99.8% of any kind of airborne contaminants that are out there right now. As you can imagine, this has become a very hot item, and it's being installed pretty much all the time for us. This is something that we had talked to Bob and Audra about, and it sounds like it would be a good fit for the town office specifically, with all the meetings and stuff that are held there. So that's what the O2 Prime is, just so when you see that, that's what that means. And then programmable thermostats throughout the building. Second phase, as you can see, I've already talked about it, but in a second phase approach, what we would, you know, recommend is insulating that attic. Once we do, once we get that moisture control under, you know, once that's under control, we can talk about doing insulation in the attic and help the efficiencies in that building.
Do you want, did you really mean that you would prefer questions to just come as they come up? Or is it better to wait?
Sure, no, sure, fire away. If that's, if that, if it's fresh, go ahead.
Okay, if it gets annoying, then just feel free to...
No, no, no worries.
So how, how sure are you that in terms of the percentage of the water in the basement, I've spent a lot of time in the basement and the attic over the past few years, kind of monitoring the water? And it seems difficult to determine that it is all coming from below. It seems like a lot, or at least some, comes from the roof gutter seam issues that we have. I mean, there are times when there's a little river of water that's been going down, and some of that, to me, certainly seems to end up in the basement. So like, how do you go about determining the source of the water in the basement?
Well, I'll jump in real quick. So we had a building envelope expert come up and actually do an examination of your building, and he came up with the same, kind of the same conclusions that we had previously came up with. But really in the basement, so the water coming in the basement is groundwater. Ultimately, groundwater coming from higher up the hill, heading towards the ocean is really. And when the building was built in the 1800s, you know, they didn't have the products that you have today to control moisture coming into buildings. So they would literally let the water flow through the buildings. And that, there's actually why there's actually grooves cut into the floor of the building as the water would flow through the building there. And so we can't stop that. That has to continue because the water needs to continue on flow. So the membrane allows the water to flow. It'll be designed to water, allow the water to flow below there. So as Denny mentioned, at the same time when the building was built, it was meant to allow water, moisture that would, as the water returned to moisture, moisture to flow out of the building through, throughout, through the roofing system, up through the cupolas. Now, all that has been sealed to make it more energy efficient, more, less drafty.
I mean, that part I totally, I completely understand the philosophy and all of that behind it, but there's just definitely also, I guess I worry that since there's also some water coming, and hopefully there won't be forever, but they're coming from other places that are, is not groundwater. Like when it rains, it gets worse, and water intrusion happens in all these places that, from the top. And what happens if the water gets sealed in, because you've got it all nice and sealed in the basement now? But if the water comes down through the masonry and ends up in the basement, how does it get out after that?
To call, that's why really, as Denny mentioned, we're, we need to address all three issues of where water, moist water's coming into the building. The first that you're kind of addressing now is the gutters and the upper brick system. The second is the basement, and the third is the roof. So once you address all those major water sources, the building itself then will be able to breathe enough, even after all this insulation and sealing, to allow the moisture to go out of the building. It'll be, it'll come to a point of stasis where it will be a healthy building then.
Okay, but you would still do the basement ceiling before doing the full roof leak mitigation?
Well, really, in this, we have the basement and the roof leak ceiling as two, in Phase One, being really done at the same time. I mean, maybe not exactly at the same time, in the same phase. The Phase Two, the insulation, so when they remodeled the Opera House, they put an insulation barrier at the floor level of the attic. And they, they did an okay job, not a complete super job, but they did an okay job. Ideally, that insulation barrier, that thermal vapor barrier would be at the roof level, underneath the roof level. We moved it to Phase Two. It's costly, and since you already have a decent vapor air, vapor thermal barrier at the floor level of the attic, it becomes a slow payback. So that's why we put it to Phase Two to do, you know, really address the moisture infiltration issues first, the roof and the basement, and then allow you guys to make a decision. Do you want to create more energy savings by insulating the, underneath the roof with spray foam there? But the, both the roof and the basement, moisture infiltration would be addressed in Phase One.
Did that answer your question, or?
Yeah, I think so, for the most part.
Yeah, so we're not doing just, I mean, we're, we're looking at all three of those as where the water, we're seeing where the water is actually coming in. So they're all, being that your gutters are already done, we're just starting in this phase to finish those two off to control that moisture. Once we see it's controlled completely, then, then we would do, consider, like, for you guys to look at the attic insulation. But that's the whole thing.
Does it become a really, does it become a really big problem if you say we're pretty sure that the roof isn't going to leak for a long time? The spray foam insulation, what is the love, you know, what happens if there is, the roof does leak a little bit? And you, maybe even in 100 years or something, and you've got that spray foam insulation? What, what negative consequence is there?
No, you would want to refix the roof first before you'd spray foam the underside of the roof. I mean, you don't want water coming down into the boards. There still will be boards and access to structural wood from, from the roof system. So the roof would want to be replaced, the membrane, the slate shingles removed and a membrane placed underneath the roof before you would want to spray foam. So now, obviously, that insulation should be a 50 to 100 year insulation there. You know, at some point, the roof would need further repairs, but that should be 50 plus years from the end of this project.
And what happens in 50 years when it's, how do you know if the roof is leaking when you have it all, like, spray foamed? And is that, does it then become impossible to ever know when you have a roof leak, or?
No, you would see, you would see moisture coming into different areas. The moisture would go someplace either, so you'd spray foam between the rafter joists. You would, so if there was moisture leaking in there, you'd notice moisture coming on those rafter joists, if they're coming in the walls. Ultimately, if it got to where leaking as bad as it, the gutters were leaking as bad as they are now, you would see the same situation you'd have now that's being repaired, that you did. You know, once that leak starts, you'd have the same, same effect on the building there. So the spray foam, yeah, you wouldn't want to spray foam a roof that is leaking now, but now you would notice leakage when it occurs in the future there. And unfortunately, the reality is, is one day the roof will leak again.
Right, and that just becomes really hard to tell exactly where it's leaking when you don't have those exposed boards. But it's already pretty hard to tell where it's coming from, so.
That's right. Spray foam most certainly will make it a little bit more difficult to determine where the leakage is occurring there. But as I mentioned, you know, once this project's done, that's 50 years or plus from now.
It's somebody else's problem.
Dave, you've been up to your ears with this. You want to make any comment before we skip this building?
I think Elmar explained it pretty well. I think that maybe people need to understand that, you know, originally when we were working on the roof, we were hopeful that it was just the gutters, but when you start taking things apart, you find more and more issues as you get into it. And that's just the nature of a repair of an old building like that. You know, you know, it would have been great if we would have just had to take the gutters off and put new ones on, but we took the gutters off and all the brickwork behind it was bad. And then we did that, and now we're seeing that, you know, the slates are leaking. And, you know, we've addressed the very top of the roof with the EPDM membrane sealant, which has done a lot of, has benefited the roof on the very top, but you have the slate portion. That's the part that's, it's hard to, it's hard to find where a leak's coming from because it can be coming from the top, but only comes out at the bottom. So you really don't know where the leak is on the entire slate portion of the roof. So, you know, the only real way to make that 100% is to pull those slates off and then put a membrane behind it and reinstall the slates and replace any ones that are damaged. Then you know 100% that, you know, hopefully you've, you've shiplapped everything and you've made it 100% watertight. And I think that's what Elmar was explaining.
Do you have any other questions for this building, or are we good on this building?
Let's go on to the next building. We can ask them back, we can ask them back to questions.
Yep, definitely. Yeah, if you think of anything else, just let me know. So the next one was the Public Safety Buildings. Again, we're going to redo, replace everything to LED. This one here, we had, we're going to be installing, well, we recommend installing the heat pump in the fitness room and then replacing the heating and cooling heat pumps units and air handler units. This was something that has already been in the works that you guys were planning on doing. Being that we're looking at doing this project, it's definitely an easier way to roll it into this in, you know, less, it makes it easier for the long term of this project and financing it over a longer period. What I didn't mention, and you know, one of the things about a performance contract is, it's important is the first year, once we put the project in place, there's a full year of non-payments. There's a construction phase. So you, there's basically no payment, in theory, like if we signed this before end of year, it wouldn't start anything until 2022. So it definitely helps the finance side of it for you guys as far as, you know, cash flow purposes. So it was, it made sense to roll this into the project. Phase Two for this location, that was it for these, these two buildings for the most part. Phase Two, we considered potential solar for the rooftops of these two locations. Because it was something that we looked at and, you know, talked about. That being said, if we were considering doing that, both roofs would need to be replaced before you would do anything with the solar on that rooftop. But we did look at it, and we do have numbers and everything for it down the road if we'd considered looking at this as an option, so. Any questions on this location?
Yeah, could you just delve in a little bit more? I think maybe you broke up, or I just couldn't hear you for a second when you're talking about this solar. What were, could maybe just elaborate a little bit more about the, whether you think it's worth it or not? Or is the roof strong enough? I remember one time they said it, like, the building wasn't structurally sound enough to put solar on it. All kinds of different things have been said.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we had our structural engineer come up and take a look at the drawings that were created and take a look at the building. And most certainly, there need, there need to be structural work done to those two roofs if you're going to put solar on them. You know, he, we thought we could probably lower that cost a little bit, but it would still be a significant cost there to build up that roof to put solar on there. And that's really kind of what, when we looked at the pricing of the solar and the structural improvement and the replacement of roof, you know, we fairly kind of got, you know, with Maine passing the community solar law, you know, really, there's a lot of cost benefit in the size of the solar that can be installed under a community solar and make solar more attractive, buying it from, being involved in community solar project versus, you know, trying to put it on a roof, because, yeah, it's a, it wasn't a small number to do the necessary upgrades to address the roof at these buildings for the solar.
Right, so we, we used it as a Phase Two option as, as we move into, get done the first project and, you know, things evolve, especially on the solar side as well. It might be, it might make more sense down the road as well, so we could look at that as an option.
Great, thank you.
Yep. This is two locations. We had the Public Works and the Wastewater Treatment Plant. The, I'll just start with the Wastewater Treatment Plant, even though it's on the bottom, but that is, would be strictly for a Phase Two. We would do lighting, a lighting change out to make sure everything's to LED in that location. But the big portion of the wastewater treatment was looking at that as another option for solar, because it's a much bigger roof. But once again, that would be more of a Phase Two project, because the roof would need to be replaced before we would do something up on that roof. So, but in addition to the Public Works, the building envelope, mostly weather stripping things to keep the heat in, minimize heat loss, and then a heat pump for an office space.
So with the, so both of those buildings would need roof replacements?
Yeah, structurally, I believe, Elmer, correct me if I'm wrong, structurally, this building would be okay for the structural side of it, but the roof is an older roof. It would need to probably be addressed before we would do anything up there.
You're talking about wastewater treatment?
Yes.
And public works?
No, not public works. No, public works, not, we didn't consider that as an option for the, the solar side.
And why is that?
Well, these were the, these, these locations had, were the best option for, I think, just where their location was. I don't think we, I don't know if I really have a good answer for why we wouldn't look at the public works, but these were the two, the public works and the public safety were the two locations that we, we kind of discussed as a group would be the locations to consider.
Because that public works building has been considered in the past. And then we were told that not only would it not hold solar panels, but we should probably tear the whole building down because it might fall down at any moment. And then that was reevaluated, we had got a new town manager, I don't know, somebody else looked at it and it was like, we don't have to tear the building down. But it was initially identified as a sunwise, as a, as a really great place.
Yeah, yeah, Danny, it's the structural work that need to be done on the buildings. I mean, yeah, I agree, it shouldn't be, doesn't need to be tore down. It's really, as far as the purpose that it serves, it's not that bad of a building. Obviously, you know, you can potentially have a better building, but I mean, it's really not that bad. Unfortunately, with the long spans and the, and you know, you have both, there's two things you need to look at is the, the weight of the solar panels and it has to still meet the snow load with that weight of the solar panel. And those buildings are really designed, those metal buildings like that are really designed to carry the snow load requirements when they, they put up, that's the cost savings of them being put up there. So, you know, both the wastewater treatment plant garage and the public work garage would require structural upgrades to them to be able to have solar panels on them.
I have a quick question. It's sort of along the same line. Since Maine changed its rules, are you finding, I don't know if you've had enough time to go into this conversation with other customers, have you found other people are choosing to go on to join other plans? And it's more cost effective and, and easier to do than putting solar on, on roofs?
I think, most certainly, we, we're talking to the city of Westbrook. I know I'm a resident of the city of Westbrook, plus we're starting development of a project. That, that's their approach. They have a old landfill that the city owns, that they're looking at doing a solar, they, community solar project there. And that would be a more cost effective than putting solar on the roofs of the town buildings there, city buildings there. I'll let Danny jump in if I know he talked to a couple other cities and towns that have looked at similar things there.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're spot on. I mean, I think a lot of interests, the, the building option is always a great option, you know, if you can do it. But the community solar, not even the community solar, if you have a good piece of land that's available to the town, that's been the more of the direction that most people are leaning towards now. Like he was saying with Westbrook, they have a perfect location that's not being used and it's just wide open. So anytime you have that option, it's just less work. At the end of the day, you got to do work to these buildings to, to be able to even consider putting solar up there. So the cost is always going to be a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Mark. Let's move on to the next building.
Yep, so the next one is the Snowball location. Again, lighting is a little bit more here because we had, so replace existing LED, I'm sorry, switch everything to LED in this location. Replace the trail lighting that is having failures. It, it was a big expense last year because of the failures of those lights due to the fixtures. So we have already talked to a group that specializes in this and we can fix this problem. So that's part of this portion of the lighting. And then adding new parking lot lighting, LED lights for the parking lots. Building envelope, weather stripping again to doors and those types of things. Replace single pane windows with double panes. Some of them are already double panes, so we'd be just switching out the ones that are single to, to make everything up to par with, with what's already there. And then improving, an additional thing would be just kind of a facelift approach, improvement to the front entrance so that basically everyone from the town can see a new look to the front of the building, just in more of a visual upgrade. Nothing crazy, nothing expensive, but it would show that there's been some things going on there that's going to be exciting. And the last thing, of course, is the geothermal heating. This is something that we talked about early on and this is the carbon footprint move for the town to really make a big move into this green, cleaner energy. Help reduce the carbon footprint. It will change the heating and cooling current system that's there from fuel, so that's a big deal. And it's upgradable and it could be pretty much used in any changes that are ever made at the Snowball. So if you, I know there's been a lot of talk with the Snowball and there's obviously discussions on the future of how things are going to change there. But the beauty of this system is that it can be used the way we've designed it for whatever you guys decide to end with. Whether it's an addition onto this building or there's a new building altogether.
Well, I'll drop in quick, not anything you want there, but most certainly what we did is the big cost of geothermal systems is the well, well field. And so we decide, designed well field to be able to handle expansion of either the existing lodge or new lodge. What would be appropriate at, we anticipate that you'd build at the, this site there. So because you really can't add to a well field, once you get one well field drilled, you know, that's, you know, you can't dig up those pipes and add new pipes in there to them. So you have to put a new well field. So that cost of being able to handle an expansion or replacement of the lodge is included in this project.
Danny, what's the carbon footprint reduction for something like that quantity?
Just for the, just for this location, it'd be about twenty tons.
Per, per?
Per, per year. And the one thing that you should note on this is, so this provides cooling. So this space would come, become air conditioned. So you're actually reducing your carbon and actually picking up more potential comfort in there because you're, you have a fully air conditioned building now, you're going away from a, you know, building that is.
So now it makes it a full year round, full year round comfort that can you, so you can utilize this space. So. And then with this here, we moved on to the second phase potential. Elmer, Elmer had a great idea with this and it was in the snowmaking process to help you guys reduce the energy costs in the snowmaking side, which is a very expensive portion of, you know, the utility bill there. So the second phase would be to look at, we're, we're coming into a perfect timing on this because we would be able to analyze that process right now when it starts up for you guys. And then we can put in place the improvements to reduce those costs quite a bit, which would, you know, obviously help in the long run for you guys. And then the second portion would be to replace the roof on the current lodge and insulate it. This, of course, again, is dependent on what direction you decide to go with on, with this location. If it's an addition, then absolutely this is something you can consider doing. So I had an additional picture of Audra and Bob going down the slide, but I.
It wasn't me, it was Allison.
What's that?
That was Allison and then our finance director, Jody Taylor and Mark Ratner. I was, I was only the coach.
I couldn't get the picture to, I would not, Siemens has so many like security things. I couldn't get it to like load into my computer. So I wanted to get it in there, it would have been a nice photo, but especially, it was either that or uploading the video where they, they kind of crash at the end. So anyways, that's what we had for the Snowball. And then we have the library in here. I know it's, it's separate, it ultimately might be tied into the project, but this would be their portion of where they would have their contributions or whatever they decided to do with this project. But I figured it would be good just to put in there so you have an idea of the things that we're looking at at the library. Again, LED, you know, swapping everything to LED, using programmable controls and dimmers, weather stripping for the building envelope, re-insulate the attic because it wasn't done correctly the first time they did it, or I should say in this, in the addition. All the insulation kind of slid down, so there's a fair amount of heat loss up in the, in the roof area in the attic. So all these things would need to be done. Replacing the current fuel boiler with a propane boiler. A new automation system because theirs is failing now and it's been failing for quite some time now and it's getting worse. So those are the types of things we're doing there and potentially an O2 prime for that location as well. Anyone have any questions? I know this is kind of separate, so I, I just figured I'd put it in there so you can see the things that we looked at there.
I do have some problems, but I want to, questions at the end, but I think we can.
Okay. And these are the three options that we had come up with through the conversations with Bob, Audra and Dave. So in these, you'll see there's really a couple of big things that change the, the, the cash flow of it and the savings and the contribution from the town. So as I'm, as you, if you recall in the beginning, what we try to do is provide as much savings in these projects to help pay for the things that need to be done. Some of those things, obviously, that go into these projects are not energy savings and there's, they're just things that you guys have to do, that you needed to do anyways. So when they get put into the project, that's where the additional contributions come in. So if you look at option one, that is basically everything that we just talked about. That's not, not including a face to, anything in face to. That's all the FIMs that we talked about, the facility improvement measures, the geothermal at the Snowball and the roof replacement. So that includes everything. Oh, and it also includes the library and that total cost of the project. However, the contribution from the library is listed above, which would be to the town. So if the library's project came out, the total dollar amount would go down depending on what they pulled out of it. But the contribution for the town would stay the same, just the overall size of the project would shrink down. But you can see what the total savings are that we put in is twenty-two percent is what we would be locking in at. And basically, that's a guaranteed saving. So again, we're keeping these measurements throughout the life of the project, whatever the term of this project is, whether it's seventeen years or longer, that would be guaranteed savings for that term. The middle one, the middle option takes the roof replacement out of the project. So that's what you'll see in total cost difference. And then you can see that the savings stay the same because the roof part of it isn't an energy savings measure. And then the last one takes the geothermal out of the Snowball project. And it puts a, just a boiler replacement because that boiler is just about, it's well beyond its life. It's about to die. It could die at any time. I shouldn't say it's about to die, but it, it could die at any point here. So that replacement is a need for sure. So if you were to take the geothermal out, we'd do a replacement with another boiler and keep the roof replacement in there. So as you can see, the different contribution amounts based on those options. And of course, again, the library is, could fluctuate depending on what they pick, but it doesn't change the contribution of what the town would be. And the savings are pretty consistent across, as you can see, except for the third option goes down a bit because you're taking the geothermal out. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Head spinning a little bit.
I've got a bunch of questions that, after going through this earlier. If we're ready, so. First question is, if we were to do this ourselves, and these are all things that need to be done and we've made a commitment to reducing the energy and we have to do our infrastructure, do you have an estimate of what we would spend if we did it ourselves?
So I think a couple of comments, you know, this is a different approach, I mean, but when we look at these project costs of school over town, the total project cost is very similar, whether or not you go through the additional process or, or, or you do this, this process here. Because if you would go out and hire, you know, you would hire an engineer, have it all designed, you pay that engineer. Generally, the, on the, this size of project, the state standard is about ten percent of the project cost. Pay the engineer, then you go out to bid, you get the, you know, the bids on the projects. It's, then you get, you know, go out and get a bond to pay for, or approve all the financing, you pay for the bonds. And when you, and then you have the, the construction, there always going to be a contingency to cover change orders. When you put that whole cost together, that whole cost is similar to this cost we're representing here. A little bit different is, is Siemens has been holding, the town hasn't paid anything yet. We've done engineering, all this, got final costs on this, ready to go to the, to contract and there won't be any change orders, so there's no contingency that town needs to hold. And, you know, and what, like Danny was saying, you actually, once it's financed, you actually won't even pay for engineering or anything for, until the year construction period is over there. So it really is, we would anticipate if you go out and did this all on your own, you would be very similar number. Obviously, they wouldn't be exact.
Okay, let me, let me continue the questions. It says here, and I'm, I'm working on option, option one, working off of that. It says energy and operational savings, forty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-two percent. What's that forty-seven, is that forty-seven thousand dollars? Where's that forty-seven thousand dollars at? Is that a year? Is that, what, what is that?
That's per year.
Per year.
Here, so that, that comes out to about eight hundred thousand, I think of it seventeen years, which would knock the project cost. Then if we take out eight hundred thousand from the two thirty-eight, it's about a million five. So even though, or, or I should, I should add that on, so it'd be about over three million to do it ourselves. Is that what you're saying?
No.
Where's that savings from? Is that energy savings?
That's energy savings and lighting, operational. So especially at the Snowball, you've been replacing those lights and that's a big expense. And with the fluorescent bulbs, all your fluorescent bulbs, your light fixture, or identity, their life and they're being replaced. The, with the LEDs, this is a seventeen year product with, that will all come with a warranty. You'll have, you won't have that cost of replacing those walls. So that, that's where the operational savings is. And then the rest of it's energy savings. So project cost, you guys would do it yourself, everything that we listed, we would anticipate you would spend two point three million dollars. You know?
Right.
The same as we did, you would have the same energy savings, that's correct.
Got it. Second, second question is, what, what are the energy savings? Can you give it that, can you give us an energy savings estimate so that I can explain it? I can articulate that to the, the, the public that's had us join the global covenant of, covenant of mayors? You know, what's our energy savings? Not in terms of dollars, but in terms of, you know, what we're saving. How do we articulate that? I just want to clarify things for people watching.
Sure.
And Colleen, do you have that available?
That's the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty.
Yeah, that's the twenty-two percent of the total annual spend that you guys currently have. That's.
Do you want, you want energy unit?
Yes, I'm, I'm not interested in the, in the, in the money savings because our, one of the goals that we're dealing with with global warming is how much energy are, are we not using? That's when I'm sort of curious about the energy savings, not the money savings.
Yep, so I can list off the three units of energy. In kilowatt hours, we, that value is a guarantee of a hundred and ten thousand kilowatt hours.
Over what period of time?
That is one year's worth, an annual reduction of a hundred and ten thousand kilowatt hours. An annual reduction of five hundred and forty-nine kilowatts.
Okay.
An annual reduction of seven thousand four hundred and forty-four gallons of oil.
Okay, this is here, okay.
If you, I guess, is it correct to say if we look at any comparison quarter? If you, I guess, is it correct to say, if we look at any comparison quarter, basically the town of Camden, just the town, is reducing its energy by 22%? Energy and operational savings is 22% of our current total, is that correct?
Yeah. And, and if you look at the slide I just put on there, we have it broken down onto kind of your carbon reduction goals, well, we don't have goals, but I'm saying like, what we have listed of each breakout of how it affects what we're doing, really what these measures we're putting in place. We thought this would be a kind of a good slide to show you, you know, how much this does affect your carbon footprint, which is quite a bit, and everything that we do even beyond this, we'll just keep adding to it. So it's kind of like I said, a phased approach to get you guys going in the right direction, this is a good start, for sure.
I, same question, Marcus, that wanting to just dig a little bit deeper into that, because if 22% was the dollar amount saved, it, it can't be exactly the same for the, I'm interested in exact same question that Marcus, and I'm not sure that we have that answer in terms of a percentage of, like, looking at this pie chart, it looks like this is our...
Oops. I, I can't hear.
We lost you, Allison. I think she's frozen.
You're frozen, Allison.
Well, I think, well, she's, she's frozen, let me ask, it's, what's our, you know, we're trying to, you know, if we can say the town saved 22%, and I know that's not the number, percentage of our energy use for a year, a year's time, that's what this would do. I'm looking for, not the financial savings, but how much energy savings based on what we're spending now.
Yeah, well, jumping, so really, so because it is just going from dollars to, from units of energy to dollars, it is just multiplying by your current, your, or your average rate of last three, use lot, three years' average to get a good representation. Really, for these buildings, it is 22% of your energy. Now, most certainly, we could, you know, if you, we could put it all in BTUs and get that exact percent, it's not going to be greatly different than the 22% of BTUs. If we put all the energy in the same, you know, unit of measurement, kilowatt hours and gallons in the same, it is, in effect, could be very close to 22%. You're, you're correct, it's not exactly 22%.
Right.
I don't think we're set up right now to crank that number out.
Okay, that's, that's one of the important things, is we're tasked by the Global Covenant of Mayors to save a certain percentage of energy, you know, and that's one of the main reasons for doing this program, because you're giving us a more advanced program than we can get by just doing our, I second, two other questions I have. Number one, some of the engineers that have looked at the Snowball Lodge over the years that we, as we've talked to them about it, one of them has told me that the foundation is not strong and needs repair work. Is that something you guys looked at and noticed, or what's the, what's the, where is that building in terms of its, its ability to be standing for considerable amount of time?
So, yeah, we looked at the foundation, we, similar, we didn't see that it, yeah, you should be tearing it down.
Okay.
There, I mean, it sits on 12 inches of reinforced concrete, and that's actually kind of, as we designed the well field, we did a mock-up of a little expansion just on our own. Yeah, we would actually recommend expanding that, is our recommendation, but I mean, obviously, it's your choice of what, you know, how you want to go down, but we would, we brought both engineers and contractors out there, and they all felt fine with expanding on that existing foundation.
Okay, so you would be expanding that as part of the problem, so you'd making sure that the foundation is sturdy and appropriate?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, last question for, for me right now, the snowmaking at the lodge, do you have the figures for that, and what that would cost? Because that, as I understand, is our number one cost for the whole town, the energy cost is the snowmaking. Have you had a chance to really dive into that yet?
No, and really, the issue is, we actually need to evaluate it when you're making snow. We did not start this evaluation until the end of the process. It's because there's so many variables that are, you're outside in nature, and there's so many variables that we really actually have to measure to get the correct recommendation, that we really need to do it over this snowmaking season, that's, you know, we really can't give you, you know, a recommendation without doing that actual measurement there. Most certainly, we're certain there can be a decent amount of reduction of energy on the snowmaking, just...
Because I think one of the, one of the important things that's happening with climate change is, the snowmaking is beginning to become much more important to the lifespan of the snowball as a snow skiing area. So that's important when you work on that, I think that's a priority.
Yeah, that, that's been a hot topic, when we started talking about that, Bob and Audra were right on, they agreed 100%, that's definitely something we want to look at, and we can look at, you know, we're coming right into the season, so it's, it's perfect timing for it, so, but yeah, that would definitely be something we would be looking at right away.
And can I make a comment about that as well? So I know there's been some questions about why are we looking at this, because we just increased our snowmaking capacity at the snowball during the redevelopment, and I just think it's important to point out that this is, you know, that was increasing the capacity to make more snow on more parts of the mountain, and it didn't necessarily take into account how to do that as efficiently as possible, and all of the different components of that system that need to work together to do it efficiently, and that's the purpose of it.
I need to interrupt for a second, whoever's controlling it, Allison's computer crashed, and she's now ready to come back in again, so if somebody could let her back in.
That's the problem, because I have to lose a screen share.
You want me to turn it off?
No, I can do it.
Can you do it?
I'll let her in.
Can you do it?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, sorry, Audra.
Okay, let's go back to the previous slide on the options, so we can talk to those, Allison's back, good. Obviously, we've got three different options here to discuss for the Phase 1, I guess you should call it, right?
Yes.
Are there any conversation, Mark, Allison, Jenna, Taylor's not here, regarding the pros and cons of the three?
Well, I have, I, I'm in favor of doing as much as we can, so I have two questions about that. Number one, for Dave St. Laurent, what he thinks of this, and what he would choose, because he's the expert. And number two, Audra, do we have the funds to, you know, $79,000 a year is not a huge amount of money in our overall budget, but do we have the funds to move forward with this? Those are my two questions.
So I can answer one of those questions. So this would be built into the budget process, and as Denny said, it wouldn't be something that would come due until FY, either the very end of FY '22, or the beginning even of FY '23. So we have the opportunity to include this as part of the budget process. We do have some debt falling off to the tune of, I believe it's about $60,000, and that was for the upgrades to the Ross and Street pump station, that's falling off in this upcoming financial year. Also, two, about two years from now, the debt for the public safety building, which is about $55,000 a year, I believe, is falling off, so we're retiring some debt in time, some capital debt in time to phase in a new project.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's a good time to do it. Plus, the other consideration is, right now, if, if money is as cheap as it's probably ever going to be.
You're spot on. Yeah, the rates are, we have historically low rates we've never seen before, and to the point where, if you're going to do a project, this is an ideal time to do a project.
And, and I think infrastructure is something that people tend to avoid, and it causes, it's either pay now or pay later, but usually when you pay later, you pay a lot more, so...
You're spot on.
I'm in favor of one, and, and I wanted to ask Dave, what you think, Dave?
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Putting financing aside, and putting financial ability aside, I think that, you know, based on need, one is, is the choice I would go with, to be honest with you. I think that it's hard to predict where the snowball's going to go, but I think that, you know, the geothermal would be a good asset to that facility, whether the snowball stayed the way it is now, or if it changed into something else. I think that, you know, without doing the roof, we'd be selling ourselves short, and that's, that's a need that needs to be done in conjunction with the membrane system in the basement, so those kind of need to go together. That's, that would be what I would, I would do if, if money wasn't an object, but that's, that's not a decision I can make, and that's, that's a good decision.
Any other questions? Allison?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my computer just completely crashed right in the middle of me asking my question, so I don't know what was said for the five minutes I was gone, but just the quick response for if somebody were to ask, when I am, am looking at this, it almost looks like where it's being suggested that we contribute, we pay, you know, $79,000 a year in order to be able to save $47,000 a year. Is that, help, just help me see where I'm...
Yeah, no, the, those savings, those are savings that we found that you could utilize in this project to help pay for the improvements that you guys need to make. There's a lot of things in here that are not energy-saving things, but there are things that you have to do, and things that you were planning on doing. So the beauty of this type of project is that you can roll it into one, utilize a low rate to finance over a long period. Savings are being subtracted from that amount, that we're guaranteeing, of course, and we take measurements every year to make sure that it's hitting those marks. And so, yeah, and then, of course, you have a, a whole year of non-payment on top of that, right? So to, to, you know, you'll be starting to see savings before we're even close to being done the project, so you're taking advantage of that as well. But no, you're not, this isn't spending...
Okay, that's helpful, it's, that's right, it's not all about energy savings, a lot of it is just stuff we have to do to the buildings, no matter what.
Yeah, a lot of, there's a lot of things in here that you guys, it's just time to do, and, and you were expecting to do, it's just easy to roll it into this type of project, and take advantage of the guaranteed savings with it, so.
Um, are we expecting to make a final decision tonight? What is, what's the hope for, this is a little bit for me to process, and I'm supportive of it all, and will generally, I think, just defer to those who have looked at it more carefully, and whose area of expertise it is, but I'm a little bit nervous about tonight giving the, go ahead to, yeah, go ahead and, you know, insulate the attic roof, or the, it, it just feels like a lot of decision to make in one, you know, without having had the benefit of just some members of the public saying, hey, why didn't you ask this, or why didn't you ask this? It all seems great to me, I don't know what, I'm, I'm happy to hear a different perspective on that, I don't want to just drag it out forever, either.
I don't know what additional information we need to make a decision, but could be, certainly. These are, these are projects that, I think fundamentally is, do we agree which projects we believe need to be done to benefit the town, not just from the energy and operational savings side, but from the, and whether the project approach makes sense. Yeah, we can delay it, we can put it on the table for, I'm not sure, between now and whatever, we'll know more than we'll know now, especially because you're right, Allison's very technical, I understand that.
I mean, I get it, but also keep in mind that, that you've been looking really carefully at this for like a year, and so, some of it's just the, the process part for me, and I know that's an annoying thing to say, but just the, you know, the Ragged Mountain Foundation, and the, just wanting to dot our i's and cross our t's in terms of, like, the community outreach part, part of this, I'm, I'm more just saying, can we digest it, sort of basically support a concept of one thing or the other, and then vote next week, or, you know, in two weeks? Does that present a problem to let it...
Dave?
I just want to clarify that, that I think that the, by, by moving forward with this, you're not committing to doing the Phase 2 work, you're only committing to doing Phase 1 work at this point.
Exactly.
So, I mean, I think that's an important part, because some of the things that were talked about were Phase 2, like the insulating of the attic, it really isn't part of this.
Yeah, no, that's, that, we got to get other things under control, and those things come in later. I mean, this here is just, the, everything that's in this project is to get your, first off, your energy savings down, but also to get the infrastructure up to, upgraded, to where it needs to be, things that need to be replaced. That, that's what this first phase is all about. Second phase would be to look at additional things that we would recommend as options that you could choose, choose from, but these here are just critical things that I think are, are important.
Jump in real quick.
Okay, also, just like, real quick, the 17-year contract portion of it, like, again, process-wise, I'm not sure that we have the authority to sign a 17-year contract, that that probably has to go to voters, because if voters don't approve, you know, funding the payment amount any given year, then we're kind of in trouble. So I just, I'm, I'm really, I think this is awesome, and I'm really happy that it's been done, and I feel great about the direction that we're going, but I don't want to vote tonight, and I'm, just because it takes my mind a little bit longer to process this.
Audra, we can cover the contract, she's right, about 17 years.
Well, I mean, there's, we can get in, I've already spoken with the attorney about this, there's a number of options that we have around that.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, because it's a lease purchase agreement, so, being that it's a lease purchase agreement, I mean, typically, that's...
Right.
You don't need that portion.
We, that normally would go through our budget process and get, but...
We have to go through the budget process, that's correct.
We, but we do have some flexibility around...
We do.
How it could be done.
We've done it before.
Bob, can I ask, do you have any questions? And I might suggest then, so we don't hold everybody up, because we're missing Taylor tonight, be able to give him a chance to look through all this, and maybe make a decision at our next meeting in a couple of weeks?
Up to the board, if you think we're going to know a lot more in two weeks, I don't agree, but that's fine, if that's what you want to do.
It's, it might not be that we're going to know, I, I really hope that you're not interpreting this as a negative mood, it's not that we're going to know more necessarily, but it's just to, it takes longer for somebody like, I mean, you've been working on it for a year, so I don't really think it's the fact that I'm just not able to learn things quickly, it's that it's, this is the, I, I just want a little bit of time to, to process, get a little bit of input from people, if, you know, that input is desired, and, and, and just, you know, hear the stuff from Bill about, about how we navigate a 17-year contract, and I just don't feel well-prepared to answer questions from people right now, and I like to be just a, a little bit above in terms of my position, see, before I vote on things. So that if questions didn't come to me tonight, or I, my, my computer crashed in the middle of this, I'm sorry about that, but...
All right, Mark, do you want to postpone this to 15?
I, I did want to hear what you thought of, of the situation, but then I'd like to postpone to the, I'm sorry, gentlemen, and, and, and Colleen, but, you know, I think, I think Taylor, this is a big decision, I think Taylor needs to be a part of it, he unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. I'm, I'm totally in favor of option one, I spent some time looking at it for a long time today, so, and I'm very infrastructure-oriented and energy-oriented, so I'm very happy, I think one of the positive things here is, not only do we get the work done, but we have a guarantee that it will produce the energy savings we need. To do it independently, we get no guarantees from independent contractors coming in to do this, and that's one of the things I love. It does guarantee our energy savings, and that's a really important part. And that's one of the things I love. It does guarantee our energy savings, and that's a really important part of this. And guarantees the work, so.
Denny, Denny, does it do anything to Siemens' schedule? Will we wait till the fifteenth?
Um, no, I mean, well, no, I mean, if, if we're trying to start it at the kickoff of the year, um, with holidays, it makes it pretty tight. Um, we do have a bid, um, an RP going out on the financing side of it, just so that we are trying to stay ahead of this. Um, but I don't, I don't, to, to answer your question, I don't know if it really puts us in a bad position. It just makes it really tight for the, um, with the holidays. That's all. If we wanted to kick it off like we were thinking, like right at the beginning of the year and get the ball rolling so that, you know, the following year is when we actually, um, start, you know, payment-wise.
Okay, okay.
But.
Jenna, do you have any comment?
Uh, I was just going to say that I actually agree completely with Allison, and I would also like to hear what Taylor's input is. Um, I think that.
Oh, Jenna, you're frozen now.
Jenna, you're frozen.
Sorry, I'm, it's storm. Um, I would, I would like to hear Taylor's input, and I would make a motion that we take a decision until the fifteenth.
Uh, I'll second that.
Uh, discussion? A roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Bob, Denny. We'll move on to the next item. Thank you, Denny. Thank you, Elmer. Thank you, Colleen, and we'll be talking soon.
All right, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. Um, I screwed up on the agenda and skipped over it. I didn't have people waiting for the library, um, library trustees appointment. So we have to bring in, anybody that wants to be brought in. I'm not sure there was anybody signed up for it. But basically, we're asking to approve three new trustees for the library, and they are Colin Page, Sarah Sarafini, and Jeremy Pratt. Any comments from the board?
Um, I know Colin Page, and I'm a big fan. Uh, he's a business owner and artist. Can't think of anybody, uh, two young children. I can't think of anybody better suited for, uh, use of the library. Um, so, um, I, I don't know the other two things, but I, I'll vote, I'll make a motion that we approve all three.
I'll second Mark's motion, um, but I also have a comment.
Sure. Okay, we'll have discussion. Go ahead, Jenna.
Thank you. Uh, I just, I would love to have the folks that want to be on the library board participating, particularly during this time of disconnect from each other, um, just to see what their interest is. I, I know Colin and I know Jeremy, and they're both fantastic people. Um, in fact, both of them served on the Montessori board during, when you're there. So I, um, they're great citizens, but I would love to know what, um, what their excitement is about the library. I think that would be fun for us to know and, and fun for the, good for the public to know as well. Um, and it's, it's great to see, uh, just this, this interest from these folks, so. Anyway, it would be nice to have people present, present their, um, come to the, these meetings when they're being confirmed, is all.
Let's see. Any other comments? Allison?
Yeah, I guess I have the, sort of the same feeling, similar to my comments, um, last week about, you know, wanting new town employees to just come, um, to select board meetings. Um, I think there, there has been a, you know, a little bit of a, a weakness over the years in terms of our, um, engagement with the library. There are so many projects. Um, and it, it's just, a lot of the time, we really need to work together, and we forget that, um, you know, how that might happen. So I do think it would be really positive to try to, um, have the select board be a little bit more engaged in the selection process, especially given all of the, um, you know, it's not just the library, it's the parks and the grounds, and just, you know, a huge part of the real estate in our downtown area is controlled by the library board and trying to figure out, you know, just making sure that we have that the, um, the group that, you know, I, sometimes I might even like to know whether they would support, you know, picnic, things like picnic tables on, you know, library grounds. I, I know, um, most of these people, and I feel comfortable with them, but it does become, you know, discouraging every so often when, you know, we might want to be able to do something. And if it turns out we've got a, a whole library board full of people that can't imagine, you know, a single picnic table during COVID or something like that. So I'm not saying that's the case here, but, um, I'm comfortable supporting um, that these candidates, but maybe in the future, we could talk about a different process.
Any other comments? Roll call vote. Mark?
Uh, can I, can we hear what Ken has to say? Uh, Ken from the library.
Sure, Ken, I agree.
Thanks, Mark. Um, I was not on the selection committee, but if you want to hear a two-sentence um, description of each of these candidates, we are really tickled with these candidates. Um, we, like every other nonprofit, have lots of volunteers in the retired category, but our service, um, mission is with families and families with kids. And each of these, uh, uh, candidates, um, do have families with kids. So we're, we're really tickled with this particular group of, of people, prospective trustees. Uh, Colin Page, Sarah Sarafina, and Jeremy Pratt. Are you, are you all familiar with them enough? It sounds like.
I am.
Sure.
Anybody else?
Oh, yeah, no, I feel that about them.
We all know all of them.
Right?
Okay, um, roll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Ja- uh, Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
And Bob, aye, four zero. Thank you, Ken. Thanks for coming. Sorry for the screw-up in the agenda.
Well, no, that's, I, I wanted to be there for Siemens as well, so that, we were good.
Thank you. Take care. Um, next item on the agenda, we have some people to let in. Uh, I can do that, Jen, so you can. It's Larry, Bob, Wyatt, and, uh, I guess Lynn didn't show up.
I don't know who that telephone number is. That's six nine?
I, I have no idea, um.
It looks like, I can't, I got a message from Brian saying that he had been wanting, he'd been trying to be let in. I think that was maybe for the other thing.
Yeah.
But.
I don't, is that him?
Hesari?
I don't know if that's his number.
I don't know. Uh, let's, let's go on with the agenda item for the approval of.
Should we just let people in if there's a number? Should we just, so that?
No, we shouldn't. We shouldn't let in any number, and we should be able to put their name on it. They, more importantly, more importantly, they should have signed up per the requirements of our agenda.
They can't necessarily put it, somebody might.
The four people who signed up are, I believe, on now, I think. Uh, I need to, on the next one, but, and Larry.
It's, Brian says that it is him. It's the six-nine-one-zero-zero, zero-nine, and I'm sorry that I just read that on. But.
Let's, let's move on with the agenda item.
It is him. I don't, somebody, I guess, all right.
Uh, thank, thank you, Allison. Um, I think we've got, I think we're missing just Lynn Donovan, the only one that did, that signed up to show up, and she didn't show up. But, uh, the agenda item is disgusting. Temporary approval of Four Knowlton Street is a temporary, uh, location of our skate park. Um, does anybody want to leave with a comment? Um, uh, Larry, or, um, uh, let's see, who else we got? Uh, Bob Lawson, is it Denny? Do you want to make a comment for this one?
Yeah, I don't mind, I don't mind starting, Bob, if that's, if that's our.
Please go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I, um, uh, I, I kind of put together a couple of notes, and I'd just like to share it. I'll be, I'll be brief. Um, I wanted to be really clear at the outset that the homes that live across the street from Four Knowlton uh, fully support a skate park in Camden. And to be clear, the, the issue isn't the skate park, but actually, as I've graded a couple of times, lack of process that was followed to evaluate following, uh, you know, having a skate park located in a neighborhood, which ultimately leads to the issue at hand, in my opinion anyway, which is the noise it generates negatively impacting the homes nearest the lot. Now, while a few homes might seem insignificant, and in a sense it is, until it's your home that's affected. Uh, the community members who support having a skate park on Knowlton Street, including people like Wyatt McConnell, are really good people, and I think they're doing a really good thing for our community. I think they're doing a really good thing for our kids. The people who live closest to that lot are also good people. Um, all we have asked to let more follow a process to evaluate the impact of having park in the village, and that would include a noise impact, traffic impact, hours of use, just to name a, a few of those things. And then all the stakeholders, supporters of the skateboard park, as well as neighbors of the skateboard park have a share of voice to find solutions together so there's a beneficial outcome. The only thing the select board has approved is the storing of the ramps on the Knowlton Street lot. Uh, I don't believe I have seen any approval given to work on the ramps. And by failing to provide the community, and I say all of this, with a process to follow, one group has been given, in again, my opinion, the unofficial and unapproved green light to essentially build a skate park a hundred feet from people's homes. And only now, after the fact, we're having some discussion about analyzing noise levels to better understand how it can be dealt with. And I'm grateful for the consideration. I'm grateful for this conversation. But my point really is, shouldn't this have been a part of an evaluation process prior to having the lot transformed into what is now kind of a de facto skate park? I believe, and my experience has really been a lot on the business side, without process, you'll always have unintended consequences. On the one hand, you've got a great group of people who I truly believe want to do the right thing for kids. Big kids even like Wyatt and small kids to have a safe place to hang out, learn some cool stuff on a skateboard or a scooter. And on the other hand, you, you've got another great group of people who honestly want the exact same thing, but with the opportunity to help shape what that space could be without negatively impacting the single largest investment that any of us make in our lives, and that's our homes. By failing to provide a clear path on the process, we now have a community, we've got community members pitted against community members. And because no process has been followed, now there will be a clear winner and a clear loser. When I believe we really could have all been winners if we'd been able to work together through a process. That being said, I, I do believe there's a solution here. Uh, I've had some great conversations and emails with Wyatt. Uh, this has included idea sharing around noise mitigation, rules, hours and such. Uh, and I'm truly grateful that he's taken the time to let me share my concerns. However, I'm, I'm in favor of pressing pause on the skate park at this point so that the proper process can be followed to establish the best possible outcome for everyone. I also recognize that's a tough vote for a select board member to make, and it would be a bitter pill for those who have already dedicated time, energy, and dollars to this space so far, particularly when we're so far down the path with actual use of the lot today. Ultimately, I'm thinking Mother Nature will probably curb the activity regardless because it's getting a little cooler, and we'll have some stuff coming out of the sky that'll look something other than rain. So my, my suggestion might be, might be moot anyway, but I still feel details need to be fleshed out around what does temporary mean? So that no community member is under the impression it means one thing while others think it means something else. What are reasonable hours of use? How will that be posted? How will it be enforced? And what's a reasonable accommodation that can be made for sound mitigation? Those of us who live next to the lot support the desire to have a skate park in the village. We really do. But in doing so, there have to be guardrails because it will impact somebody, either someone's business or their home. And simply because having a business or a home in the village, or even near the village, is equally desirable. And by working through a process in which all stakeholders, and that's a word that Wyatt's used several times, and I really love that word, because that's what we all are. We're all stakeholders. And we want a process where all stakeholders can work together and not choose one side or the other, because there shouldn't be sides. We all want what's best for our community, and I feel by doing that, the outcome would be a far better one. Those are my, those are my comments, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you very much. Um, let's see, um, uh, Larry, did you have any comment you'd like to make? You're muted, you're muted, Larry. Try again. Go ahead. Nope, you're, you're, you're still muted.
Hey, can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we are Cindy and Larry Christman. We live at fourteen Alden Street, which, uh, is right at the corner of, of Alden and Knowlton. Guess what's in the backyard? Um, Allison, I understand you had an occasion to take a visit to our, our back deck. What did you find?
I, oh, I don't, um.
With a little yellow house.
It has a lovely view of the ocean. I mean, yeah, that, I, I don't, I don't know if we want to get into like a, um, back and forth too much, because I could, I mean, I have a lot of grievances about noises on mechanic street, too. I get it. It's definitely loud. Like, it would be annoying to me, too, to all of a sudden have that noise. I, I totally get it. Um, it's, it, I'm sure it's a lot. The part, I thought the parking lot was kind of loud, too. Um.
It does get that way, yes. Okay, um, where we are is, is we definitely want to support a skateboard park. Okay, the question is, is how is that best accommodated? Um, we, we, um, our neighborhood, um, is requesting really what we believe any neighborhood would, okay, if they were going to be having a skateboard park placed in their neighborhood. Noise barriers, uh, appropriate drop-off and pickup sites uh, for the small children, appropriate traffic patterns, uh, controlled access, uh, confinement, uh, only to the park, not the streets and parking lot and everything else. And as Bob stated already, the definition of temporary. Um, we have owned our home for four, some fourteen years, and in that time, we have seen the, uh, major renovation of that block from a declining area to now a thriving one. Uh, that's not without substantial, uh, investment by the owners of the whole block. Uh, our objection is not to a park, as I mentioned, but the lack of process and input, and, and even greater, the lack of communication. Uh, these have led to taking sides and issues were not worked through, okay, in a collaborative manner in advance. Uh, now we're to the point where to work through these is a bit contentious, as we've seen. A skateboard park could benefit youth. It burns up a lot of energy. They can stay active and, and if not, uh, even develop some, uh, athletic skills. Uh, how this ties to the twenty-some-year-olds that are there, I'm not sure. Uh, the current, um, the current undisciplined approach, okay, to even a temporary setting will, um, create tension and conflict between youth and neighbors as to each's rights. Uh, there may be a, an impact even on housing values and tax base. Uh, a city park versus a neighborhood, uh, may be a more appropriate, um, and less conflicted site. And can you imagine putting a skateboard park on a lot on, on Chestnut Street? I can't, okay? Again, we are, are a proponent of, um, a skateboard park. We just think that there needs to be a lot of issues resolved, even on a temporary basis, if it's put there, okay? And where is it most appropriate to put it long-term? And where is it most appropriate to put it long-term? And oh, by the way, your energy savings program? I come from a hospital administration program. Okay, and we've done that in a number of hospitals and it was of major benefit. It's a good comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for both comments, Larry. I appreciate it. I think with that, we have one more person to speak. Otherwise, fair hold of peace. Wyatt, did you want to speak to the issue?
Yeah, am I unmuted now?
You are unmuted.
Alrighty. So I'll try to be brief, certainly more brief than my email was. I apologize for its length. You know, we're here discussing this issue because Camden lost an incredibly valuable resource over the summer. It's one that Camden has enjoyed for 20 years now, which is this skate park behind the teen center. It wasn't anybody's fault, but you know, it just appeared overnight at the worst possible time for teenagers during COVID, when outdoor recreation is the only way they're able to socialize with their friends. And COVID's hit all of us hard, but I'd love for you to place yourself in the shoes of a teenager, middle school student who's gone from going to school to going to school at home with his mom now as his teacher and his mom and everything else in his life, not being able to see his friends. And all the uncertainty that comes along with that during just a very important developmental stage in your life. And we know that the skate park is not just a resource that's important to skaters. We know that because of all the information you guys got back in August when this first came up. You heard from businesses, you heard from residents of Knox Mill, you heard from just people that see the value in a skate park, that you know, this is something that has been in Camden for 20 years because it's valued. Something that is seen as very important, particularly at this point in time. And we know it's important just because we're here tonight in what I guess is a mildly contentious way in that, you know, there's a lot of kids over there using it, you know, on Nolton Street skating now. And that could be for all sorts of reasons, but whatever the reasons are, it shows that having a well-functioning skate park in Camden is an important resource. You know, the neighbors seem to see this as sort of a push towards a permanent skate park there when what we're doing is just finding a temporary solution to a problem. And that happens all the time with very little process in Camden. I'm sitting here at 63 Rossin Avenue. I can look out my window and see all the blackness that is the Tannery site, but you know, I'm right across the street from the Tannery site and it's used on a temporary basis to serve needs of the town all the time. The noises are, I totally get the noise of the skate park. I've spent a lot of time in skate parks and I know how loud they are. And the noises at Tannery usually aren't quite to the level and certainly not to the degree of regularity, but some of them have been. I believe it was two or three years ago, there was a project that involved hauling cement slabs over to the Tannery site and then crushing them up into rubble to haul off in a dump truck. So there was heavy equipment over there, five days a week, all business hours of the day, crushing cement slabs into rubble. And I assure you, that was louder than the skate park. And it went on for weeks and I was never given notice and never had an opportunity to say my piece about what I thought about that. I work from home, so it certainly impacted my life to some degree. But you know, the use of town property to alleviate temporary problems is it's just not an uncommon thing to have happen. And that's reason for that, because it's, you know, when we talk about process, process is not an objective standard. There's not one process that suits every problem. You always have to look at the equities at stake. And when it's a temporary solution and there's a definite need to be solved, then the equities point towards solving that problem, especially when everything that's being done is reversible, as is the case here. We could, you know, it could be shut down at any time. We could move it to another place at any time. We're not doing anything there that's permanently altering that site in any way or permanently anchoring a skate park to be in that parking lot full-time. And then, you know, in choosing that lot, it wasn't like it was picked out of a hat. It was picked specifically because that parking lot was a skate park from 2000 to 2005. It eventually closed and the skate park moved behind the teen center. And that wasn't because of noise, it was because MBNA moved. And the skate park that was there 2000 to 2005 was similar wooden ramp structures. As I noted in, you know, the email I sent around about noise, it was a little different, but for the most part, in terms of the amount of noise it was generating, it's probably not wildly off of what's going on there now. And, you know, I know the neighborhoods changed, neighborhoods change. Yeah, we do need to do some work on the ramps to try to quieten them down. We absolutely need to do some work with the kids in terms of helping them understand the behavior that might have, they might have been able to get away with behind the teen center that wasn't acceptable back there any more than it's acceptable out in front of the, you know, out on the street, but they're not going to be able to get away with it and they're offending other people now that they're doing it here. So there's some work to be done there. But that's all a work in progress and that's a process that can unfold in real time. It doesn't have to be stopped while we debate and discuss these issues. You know, and the noise issue is not something I take lightly at all, because as I hope it is wildly evident from the amount of information I've sent you over the last three days, you know, skate park in Camden is something I'm invested in far more than just rebuilding that halfpipe. And I'm pretty agnostic about where a skate park finally lands in Camden. But what I will advocate strongly for, for a long time, is that it should be in the village and it should not be tucked away in a back corner, because bad things happen when kids get tucked away in a back corner. And I don't think the teen center was the best place to have a skate park. And as long as I'm trying to advocate for those two things, then I'm going to be having to do a whole lot of work to figure out what to do about noise issues, because there's not a place in this village, and I don't know that there's a place in Camden where we can put a skate park where it's not going to impact neighbors. You know, I read Joshua Moore's letter and he suggested the Tannery site and I live here and I know I know there are at least four houses that would be as impacted as the ones on Alden Street if we moved it here. If we moved to the Snow Bowl, there's plenty of people on Hosmer Pond that would be blasted by noise coming across the pond. There's no place where you can put a skate park and not have, not have to think about noise. But, you know, I come back to the point that this is a move to do this, this is a move to keep skateboarding happening on a temporary basis while we figure out the long-term solution. And that it's putting it in a parking lot that was able to deal with a skate park being there for, you know, five years at least. So I don't think it's asking too much and I don't think the process unfolding in real time is an unreasonable, an unreasonable burden to ask to fulfill what is clearly such a strong need within the community.
Thanks, Wyatt. Thanks very much. Catherine, I know you wanted, I didn't see you raise your hand. Did you want to say something? I didn't mean to bypass you, but you were sitting there so quietly.
I'm so good at that most of the time. Thank you. Yeah, I would like to pitch in a few comments. I don't need a lot of airtime. I'm going to shift over to a document where I made some notes so that I could be succinct, because I find myself in an interesting position of sort of being, you know, in the middle. My name's Catherine White. I live in Camden. I'm a single mom. I have a very social and outdoors active 14-year-old. The skate park has been part of his life for a very long time. When I found out in August that it was going away and moving to South Thomaston, I leapt into the ring with Wyatt to just assist, to do whatever I could to find a place where it could be temporarily. Though that that resource for kids who do not gravitate to team sports got to have an outlet, especially during this time where, yep, mom is now the schoolteacher. It's got to happen. I am... I'm really pleased that everybody is talking. I'm pleased that people on both sides are able to share everything that's going wrong and I think you'll find that there's a lot of agreement among us all. And I'm extremely hopeful that this is a starting point for that amount or that degree of collaboration that that seemed to be, that seemed to be railroaded during the summer, depending on where you sit in this, in this argument or in this discussion. But that was handled by a number of volunteers who were honestly and considerably and openly trying to make decisions that would satisfy the majority of people. I think we all recognize that the current location isn't ideal on both sides of the situation. The skate park's really, really loud. The noise begins early, lasts late. There are teenagers who've been, you know, snarky little packets of bravado to those whose opinions differ and that's not okay. Nothing about that is okay and I don't think you would find a single parent or caretaker on advocacy side of the situation who would agree with that. And there are adults who have not acted much better. So I am hopeful that in just speaking up briefly tonight, that I can lend some sort of a sense of advocacy for the skate park, but as well as for the collaboration of a group of like-minded, calculating, passionate, even strong-minded individuals, because those are the people that make things happen. Those are the people that solve problems and those are the people that get in, get their boots dirty and get things done. And it's going to take all of that for any temporary situation for the skate park to work. So I just wanted to vocally say that I am an advocate for the current temporary location of the skate park. I'm a much larger advocate for a concrete skate park that's less loud, that is more ideally situated in our village. We're all involved. But that takes time and that takes money and halting the activity of a temporary skate park in order to raise money and find an ideal location is just too detrimental. Because segment of our population, our teenagers, who don't have the option to renovate their deck because they know they're going to be spending more time on it this winter. They need a place to be. And I'm hopeful that with this conversation tonight and everybody in the same virtual room, that we can really begin that process of making middle ground decisions, rules, guidelines, holding kids to those that'll create a better, better feelings among all of us.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you very much. With that, I'll revert to select board discussion. Allison?
Yeah, I guess I mostly wanted to read, we did get a letter late in the day from another neighbor who was hoping that I would be able to read his, it's fairly brief, his letter. Is that okay with you, Bob, if I do that?
Oh, sure.
So this is, this is from, oh, hold on, I'm hearing a little bit of echo. Maybe just maybe everybody mutes. Dear, this is from Jedidiah Schwam. I think that goes on to explain that, but...
We all went to mute for some reason.
Okay, it looks like everybody got muted. I don't know for how long I was muted, but...
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Start over.
Start over.
Oh, really? Okay. Dear Camden Select Board, I am writing to voice my support of the new location of the skate park located at 4 Nolton Street. My perspective on the skate park is rather unique, given my position as the Executive Director of Atlantic Academy, a day treatment school that has operated out of the YMCA Teen Center building since 2017. From the perspective of our school, Atlantic Academy, which is positioned directly beside the skate park, the benefits of the new location to the skate park have been tremendous. Now that the skate park has been moved to a more community-visible location, I find the state of the park to be cleaner and more child-friendly in general. When it was behind the teen center, given the lack of community oversight due to the concealed location, the grounds of the park were often littered with broken bottles, alcohol containers, cigarette butts and occasional contraband, such as knives, marijuana pipes, et cetera, all of which made it dangerous and unpleasant to use as a school community. Given the park now resides in view of the public, our school has not seen evidence of these materials, which make it a positive resource for us to use during school hours as a community resource. Our school has not been impacted by increased traffic to the park. In fact, access to a clean and safe skate park has provided our children at the school the opportunity to learn new leisure skills and be a part of the community at large. We are thrilled to have a skate park as our neighbor and hope that there is a future in the park's continued evolution as a positive community resource and neighbor to our school community. So that's from Jed Schwam.
Thank you.
And I have some comments too, just about what we should... So this doesn't... Aspects of this really don't feel good. I like and know a number of the people that are upset, like, know and respect for numerous reasons. I, like, it makes me really sad, a couple of them actually, that have been, you know, really upset and I wish that there were a way to make everybody happy. By the same token, or the other side of the coin though, is that I'm also, I've just seen so much joy coming from this and I don't want to, this sort of negative or slightly controversial conversation to overshadow what has been really incredible on the part of volunteers. Part of the reason that this became a loud and active skate park kind of more quickly than we were ready for is because these volunteers just exceeded expectations kind of in every way. When we went to move that skate park, the Public Works Department was saying, whoa, I don't know if any of it can be saved. Everybody, you know, even the really passionate skaters were like, uh, this might not work out. Maybe none of this is salvageable and it all kind of got dragged over to that lot. And then people just did so much work. I mean, I saw Wyatt and Catherine and Rafi, everything from from cleaning up the lot to piecing all of this back together, there was so much passion. And a lot, it's not, I also just skateboarders, which I think is kind of important to mention, that for the younger kids, I have a 10-year-old and, you know, he has, you know, eight, nine, 10-year-old friends who are there quite a bit, girls too, on scooters. It's nice that the scooters aren't loud at all. Maybe we could do things. I'm really looking forward to having this be official so that we can come up with some rules that hopefully will make it much more tolerable. I have been there and seen a lot of things that are like, oh, gosh, that's frustrating to see that teenager who I just talked to about this, to, you know, to see them not wearing a mask occasionally or, you know, different things. There are a lot of impacts on the neighborhood, I think partially just because of the overall increase. I've heard from everybody that more people are using this skate park than ever used the last one. And that's because people drive by and they say, wow, what is this? We never even knew there was a skate park in Camden. And so it's been this really cool thing that obviously has created also a larger impact on the community in that area than there has been before. I, in my conversations with some, especially you, Bob, I do really want to say that, like, I appreciate that all the time that you've taken to talk to different people, to, you know, hours with Wyatt, with me the other day, even though we don't, you know, agree on everything, I think our values are really well-aligned and I think you're a really great spokesperson for the for the neighborhood and that I, I mean, what I've heard loud and clear is I think that these residents really can be like the greatest ally for, you know, a skate park there for a little while and maybe somewhere else later on, but, but working together on whether it be a noise study. I think there's a lot of improvement that can be made. It's probably never going to be a quiet place, but I do want everybody to, you know, who has concerns to know that, like, I don't expect to just vote on this and be like, okay, phew, whatever. Now we can just, you know, let it go wild. I think this, hopefully what you've seen now is sort of like the worst that it might be. is sort of like the worst that it might be for the neighborhood, and that everything from here on out can get better. I have a couple ideas where I think a long-term skate park might be a little bit better. I also do really like it right there for different reasons. But I think clearly, you know, it's not going away right away. So the best thing that we can do right now is to make it an official thing that can have rules and work quickly to, you know, enforce them really well. But, and it's going to take a little while to figure out what those are. And hopefully Audra maybe has some, you know, a process for how you would see that we can go from it first being official, you know, what is, what is, if we vote today on it being a temporary skate park.
We lost you, Allison.
Oh, what?
Your audio is gone.
I can still hear her.
I can hear too.
I can hear her fine.
Oh, good. Well, who can't? Can Audra hear me? I don't know. But I've spoken a lot, may, why don't we see who else wants to speak? And then we can figure out what the next step looks like.
Okay. First, I want to refresh everybody's mind about what happened. This was, we had, I think, a week or a few days to make a decision to save, save the park and the equipment because of the school buying the property from Wyatt, and they needed to move the property. We didn't have a long time to figure it out. So we, we made a temporary move to this location. And as Allison said, a lot of volunteers have worked hard to make it something useful for kids, particularly in a difficult time where COVID has had a huge impact, detrimental impact on kids. And I think it's been a really important thing. I think we're voting tonight on making it a temporary location. I totally understand the people impacted by it locally. I spent a long time reading Wyatt's letter today to the Select Board about all of the different noise restriction kind of things that can be done. And I'm curious if Wyatt, have you shared that with the local homeowners?
There were, so there were, there were two, two of the Alden Street residents were on that distribution list. And I, you know, I'm, it's, well, it's in the packet now, so of course it can be spread wherever. You know, that, that was meant to just get a conversation started. I want to be clear on, like, you know, in that, that email, I listed some, some things that could be done to improve noise and some comments about why I think probably just the noise of the ramps, the way that are arranged now, probably are a little louder than anything that's been there before. But as long as we're working with wooden ramps, we can change the noise, we can reduce it to some degree, but it's not going to be a changing kind. You know, if someone truly feels that their life is, and, you know, this is untenable now, we're not going to be able to reduce noise enough to get to where we would go from an untenable situation to, oh, okay, well, that's better now, with wooden ramps. We can reduce it, and we can get it to where it's better. You know, I, to be clear, I honestly, until, I don't think, I don't view this as a contentious process, and I haven't viewed it as a contentious process yet. I know there's been some frustration, but quite honestly, we were only two months into this. I mean, our first workday was September 20th. I didn't finish the half pipe until October 27th.
Okay.
Mark, why don't you finish your?
So I know there are people working on it. I think, right now, I think we have no alternative, place to put it. And as has been mentioned, winter, winter is going to solve the problems for temporary, we can, we can, well, we can deal with it. I think a couple of things that need to be done right now is a temporary park, is we need to enforce some rules, some serious rules, you know, whether it be the times it can be used. The one thing I, I've seen kids, I mentioned at last, the last Select Board meeting, I've seen kids all over town, for some reason, kids don't believe in masks. They need to be masked in this situation. That has nothing to do with the noise. They need to be aware and responsible for the noise they make and for the neighbors and understand what they're doing to people. We need to make users of the park responsible, so it does cut down, well, we figure out where and how we can produce a park for the kids. And I don't know, I don't, I don't, I have no, no expectation that this is, I don't feel that it could be, maybe it's permanent, maybe it's not, I have no decision on that at this point. All I know is we need to make a decision right now, temporarily, and then we need to work further on this. This is not going to go away. These people are always going to be affected by the noise and stuff like that. So we need to figure out, you know, look at all the options and figure out the best case. We need a skateboard park in Camden. I don't know where it's going to be. There are other options, but we can't just shut things down right this second. I don't feel, right now, especially in times of COVID, the kids need this more than anything. So if I could ask the forgiveness of the people that are affected by it right now, if we take a strong impact and work with the kids to say, look, be responsible, take responsibility for what you're doing, and then we can work towards, you know, next spring and what, where we need to go and what we need to do.
Thanks, Mark. Ms. Jenna?
So I remember this from way back when I was in high school, when it first went in. And I honestly did not realize how popular it was until it was one of those things, you don't know what you got till it's gone. And I've maybe heard more about this than almost any other issue in town. And I have a lot of sympathy for the neighbors as well. But a couple of things that I've jotted down here is, first of all, I do think that we should talk about a process and a long-term solution. But I also know that more people are home because of COVID. I know my, for myself, more things are, I'm noticing them, they're bothering me because I'm home. That I think that this, this impact may seem greater at this moment and months, and that's not to diminish it whatsoever. I think that we do need rules, and we need to figure out who's going to enforce those rules, and it needs to be done in an official way. I see a lot of kids, or I did, again, home more, but skating in the street downtown, in the mid, in the middle of the road at night, coming home often from Select Board meetings, I would see this. And I was really kind of freaked out for them. I'm a pretty good driver, and I had a couple of close calls. And I just think this is so vital, and it creates a sense of community for these kids, as Wyatt said, when it's most needed. I'm wondering if moving into a workshop format at some point, is a Zoom workshop where we can all have a conversation that's more directed and has an agenda, sort of a little different than sometimes our other workshops, where we can really kind of get into the nitty-gritty of this. And clearly, it's something that is an issue right now that won't be, and we'll have the winter to kind of pull some things together a little bit more. But there's clear, I'm recognizing a sense of immediacy in enforcement and, and rules, and just making this less impactful for the neighbors. But I also, I don't think that we can afford to lose the skate park or this opportunity for the youth of the community.
Mm-hmm, good. It's a lot worse. To Wyatt's point about process, I have to agree. I think their processes do get affected by advance, especially in small towns. But there always can be an analysis of processes to do it better in the future, and they can always be improved. That's just the point I would make on that. But to that process, we are, the process right now is to make a decision by the Select Board on whether we're approving this Fort Nolton Street as a temporary location for the skate park. That's black and white, and that is, that is process. And we probably should have done it sooner, but we didn't, and we're addressing it now. My only comment on the process is, Audra, you have confirmed that this skating activity is currently under our liability insurance carrier.
As soon as you vote to make it a temporary skate park, it will be under our.
Effective immediately, is that correct?
As soon as I inform them that's what we're doing. I've already filled out all of the paperwork to do that, and.
Okay, is there a cost associated with this?
Yes, there is going to be a premium, but we all knew this going into it. I can't tell you exactly how much, because I'm still waiting on our carrier.
Just a full disclosure, it's probably a few thousand dollars.
Yes, yeah. And this is a very common thing that municipalities do. A lot of any injury, a lot of, anything that goes on there, as long as it's posted with rules, we're very much covered. There's a lot of, you know, legislation that protects municipalities to have facilities such as this. So I, I don't want that to cloud anyone's decisions or be any sort of barrier or hindrance, because it really isn't something that the Select Board should be concerned with. Because all of the things that are needed in terms of liability and cost, we can take care of that if you make the decision to make it a temporary.
That's exactly what I was looking for, because as a Select Board member, I believe it's my responsibility to make sure that the town is not opened up to any liability, to any event because of some, I don't want to use the word oversight, but, you know, not having something like that in place. But we do have it in place, that's an important part of the process, to just to, unlike the event, there's any kind of injury out there. But again, the, the item we have before tonight, Select Board, is the approval or not of Fort Nolton Street as a temporary location for the skate park.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we approve it as a temporary skate park.
Second.
Discussion. Non, roll call, Jenna?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Bye-bye, four to zero. To Jenna's point, Jenna, you made a point about workshops and going forward. I think it's very important to not let the dialogue end here in terms of, of the issues on sound and what we can do to work together, to put together the group. Some of you on Zoom, some of you not on Zoom.
To the point about sort of putting rules in place and enforcement of rules, that's something, now that you've made it a temporary location for skate park, I need to do that immediately.
Yes.
So that's something that really isn't, it can't wait, it needs to happen right away. Because that's also part of our responsibility of having a facility.
And you're taking that responsibility to put the rules of operation, masks, whatever other items, and we have to deal with the mask thing right now. Rules, hours of operation, blah, 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 so we can enforce those rules and regulations, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
May I, may I ask a question?
Yeah, you may.
Certainly, I understand, Audra, that that would be your responsibility. My only ask is, is would we have any share of voice in terms of what the rules, particularly what the hours would look like? At least to be able to provide some input on that, since obviously we are still going to be impacted by that.
Yes.
I would, I would say that's very important. I think the neighbors should be consulted about hours. This needs to be something worked out mutually among all the people.
Yeah, and I mean, and also, I would, I just, I would, it would be helpful to me, because it seems that Bob, Catherine, Wyatt, and Larry, you've all sort of taken a leadership roles with your respective groups, which is great. So if you would be amenable to me reaching out to all of you with some help on those rules and some feedback, that would be really wonderful, because I think that, you know, that allows us to sort of work with, you know, two parties with different perspectives that are interested in working together to come up with something that everyone can live with.
I agree. We would be more than happy to do so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for attending, we appreciate. Nice to see your faces, would to see you in person sometime. But thanks again, we need to move on to our next agenda item, which would be to the approval of reductions of windjammer day sailor fees for FY '21. Just to be clear, that's this past summer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So this sort of, it picks up from that discussion that we had. We sort of tabled, you tabled it in, oh, I don't remember. I think it was the beginning of the summer. Sorry, Jen has a question?
I have, I'm just going to recuse myself from this due to a conflict of interest with, with family involved. If that is.
You have family that has a boat?
Yes.
This is just for the fees, right?
Existing boats, not future boats?
Well.
Not the licenses.
It, that's kind of complicated, because he's.
We don't need to interrogate her about.
Yeah, there's, I would say.
Prove it, Jenna. I just, no, I'm just kidding. I just think we don't, we don't really need to, like, know the exact details of any kind of business relationship that.
No, I understand this fine. I just thought it was confusing, the new license thing with existing. But Steve is trying to connect here, it doesn't seem to be connecting very well. Steve fixed it.
Yeah, I think he's, it's okay, he knows what I'm trying to say. So yeah, this is just, this is just sort of revisiting that conversation, you know, recognizing that the day sailor fleet out of Camden Harbor and the windjammers more so, it had a really difficult season because of COVID. We've got sort of a tenant, a landlord-tenant relationship with these businesses. The only thing kind of similar is some of the businesses at the Snow Bowl, you know, which is, when COVID began, asked for, you know, reduction in rent due to the impacts of COVID on their businesses at these locations. So, yeah, it's just sort of picking up from that. We've got an opportunity to sort of provide some sort of minimal relief to, you know, industry in our town that is struggling. And so, you know, my, my proposal is just to keep it very simple, not have to look at any sort of, you know, choices that any individual business made over the summer. And, you know, acknowledge the date, the windjammers were much more hard-hit by virtue of the way that their businesses operate. So, you know, giving them quite a significant reduction in their fees to the tune of 75%. And the day sailors, they did have a little bit more opportunity to operate. It was still a rough season for them. But all of them, up to this point, had paid 50%. And I would recommend that we only, that's all that we collect from, is 50% of.
So 50% for the fees for day sailors, and we're collecting 25% of the fees for windjammers.
Yes.
That's what Steve's letter in the packet has suggested, correct?
Well, that, it was my memo, but I did speak with Steve about it.
I'm here.
Select Board, go ahead. Hi, Steve.
Hi.
I thought I heard your voice somewhere.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are, you look like a ghost. Go ahead, any. Did you have any comments, Steve, that you didn't hear from Audra?
No, Audra and I had a, had a couple talks about this. And, yeah, it would make, it just makes sense that since the windjammer, the overnight windjammers who didn't run at all, that they get a certain break, and then you figure the numbers, and the day sailors ran at least, at least half what they usually do. So I, I agree with Audra, it makes sense.
Okay, Select Board, time for Mark.
I have, I have a question. I know the day sailors had a chance to sail this year, obviously with much reduced time span and reduced, I'm sure, population. What about, what about the windjammers? Did any of them run at all, or did they have a totally shut-down season?
I'm, I'm not.
Steve, did one of the windjammers run?
Yes, for a part, for, in a limited capacity, this schooner mistress who holds, that holds six people, that was able to do small families, small groups, and still work within the guidelines of the state. So they were able to do some trips.
Was it at a same level as a day sailor?
It's hard to say, they didn't run the full season. They ran, you know, like, peak in July, they, they, they did some trips. I don't know the exact numbers offhand, but, yeah, they probably ran about half or a little less.
Okay. Other comments, Select Board? Allison?
I'm comfortable approving the recommendation from town staff. It's not a perfectly easy one to come up with. And I, this seems like the best, the best we can do in terms of being fair and reasonable, and that anything else would be really impossibly convoluted with far too many criteria. So I would move that we approve the recommendation from.
Okay. Before we get to motion, I want, if you don't mind, Allison, I just wanted to comment that. um, your question to you, Audra, improving whatever we approved, should there be a specificity of when the payment is due?
Well, yeah, that we did, we did extend the period where we were collecting payments to just allow for, you know.
Well, if we were to approve.
Let's say by the end of the financial year, any, any remaining payments.
So you're talking about June thirty?
Yeah.
Two thousand twenty one.
Yeah.
All right. Just want to be clear because they're going to be backed up with next, what, May, April, May paying another hopefully full fee, but they have a full season next year. Um, if they, some of them I know want to pay early or some may not.
Sure. And I mean, and I guess with the upcoming, the upcoming fees, you will have an opportunity to wrap that into the budget process.
You mean as far as what they're paying now?
Yeah, yes.
Currently in the budget, there's full fee payment.
No, we did reduce it.
Oh, you did reduce. Okay. All right. Allison, back to your point. Go ahead.
I didn't make a havoc when I made a motion.
Okay, good. We need a second.
I'll second.
Yeah, we'd like to get a choice. There's only three of us. Okay, add no comment on my side. I'll go for roll call vote with Mark.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
And Baba, I, we had to be unanimous, you know, because there's only three of us.
Oh, right.
She had to reduce herself.
That darn charter.
Yes. Thank you. No comment. Okay, thank you on, on that one. Thank you, Steve. Pixley, if you're still out there, have a good one.
Yeah, you're welcome. You guys have a good night.
All right. Item, the fourth item in actions is the disposition of Seven Willow Street. And we know we have, I think it's four. Is that correct number, other four uh, letters of interest that are in our packet? Um, who wants to leave?
Uh, I'm gonna take a break for a second. I will be back in a moment. So talk among yourselves.
We'll all take, like, we'll all take a couple of minute break and, and while we're at the break, we'll have um, we'll have Jeremy sing songs. Go ahead, Mark.
Oh, are we taking a break or are we having Jeremy do something?
Wait, taking a break.
Oh, great.
He asked me to sing and I'm not going to sing.
Oh, okay.
She could sing. I can't sing.
Welcome, Dan Ford.
Hi, Dan.
Dan, can you hear us okay? Dan, can you hear us okay? Dan? I don't think you can hear us. Uh-oh.
Hey, thanks.
All right. Can you hear us, Dan?
Yeah, yeah, I'll wait. I, I, yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to hear.
Yeah, I can hear, I can hear, I can hear pretty well. Yeah.
Okay, well, Electrolux is not a hundred percent perfect, so. We're just taking a short break, Dan.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Yeah. Sorry, I'm quiet.
Who did? For some reason, I have Dan Ford on here twice.
What's that?
Dan Ford's on here twice. How's that happen?
Who knows?
All right.
Bob.
Yeah, Jeremy.
Sometimes I end up on twice if I have logged in on my phone and on my um, laptop.
I see. Makes sense. I think some people do it for audio reasons. They go on phone.
They don't do it with fiber anymore.
Are we just waiting for Allison? Um, Jenna, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, let's um, let's discuss the disposition of Seven Willow Street, Audra.
All right. So all of you, all of you are aware of the fact that town acquired Seven Willow Street through a tax lien foreclosure. Um, we've had it for some time now and we're at the stage where um, something really uh, needs to be done with that property. I don't think there was ever any intention of the town in um, you know, keeping it. Um, I think, you know, there was, there was always a desire to um, you know, ensure that it was put back into productive use. Um, however, we have talked a lot about housing affordability being a major priority of the town. So I think that that was, you know, something that was um, really stressed when uh, this was put out to RFP. Um, so you know, as a result, we got four different proposals back. Um, I think that you've all read through them. Um, so do you want to just kind of go through them all or do you want to?
Um, I'm like, well, select board members are zooming, read all four of these. So you know, I can presume that's occurred. So I'd like to hear, it was flashing around here. I know what's going on.
What's going on?
I think that, I think we're zooming in and out.
No, I think somebody's sharing their screen and it's like YouTube.
Oh, that might be me. Sorry.
I lost it completely.
We gotta, yeah, one thing we can't do is watch YouTube at the same time as being on here.
That would happen?
Um.
Yeah, Dan's.
I think that's me. I didn't shut it off YouTube. Hang on a sec here.
Speaking of YouTube, I don't know if everybody can hear me or not.
I can hear you. Yes, I can hear you.
Um, can we make sure that um, somebody's monitoring the comments on YouTube? Because that's just, you know, one of the, that's the method that we've given to the public for
Sure.
live um, participation. And it's, I did just get an email from a citizen asking why we weren't doing that. Um, and now that I've logged on, it looks like we're having a number of comments, many of which are no longer relevant. Um.
Okay, okay. Um, anyway, we, we were just saying that uh, we, we've all read these. Let's go to select board comments and then you can, you know, we have one participant here in Dan Ford. We can ask questions specifically of his, of course. But anybody want to lead into the conversation of the four proposals? Allison, put her hand up first.
Um, so I, I think, you know, kind of along the terms of what we've discussed before, we all wanted to use this as a um, the, a vehicle to increase the availability of affordable housing. Um, my personally, um, my only um, focus is on trying to make sure um, that we choose a proposal that guarantees the most affordable housing in the most sustainable way and the most guaranteed manner. And so when I was reading over those responses, maybe we can just go through and mute everybody because it looks like there's a tiny bit of feedback. But um, when I was reading over the responses, um, they, they kind of rang to me a little bit as, as exactly what they were intended to be, which was a response to a, a request for expressions of interest. And so most of them didn't really get into the nitty gritty um, of exactly how we could achieve um, some type of affordability covenant, deed restriction. Um, I think we can all look up the, the model that Habitat has used in the past. And so we're kind of a little bit familiar with the idea that, that Habitat has a track record of doing this, but I don't think that many of us know exactly the kind of full gamut of how that can be achieved. So um, it, it seemed like any number of the proposals could, it could achieve the goals. But um, I, I guess I have a few questions. One is, is zoning in terms of currently, right now, what are the options in terms of multifamily units there, accessory dwellings? Um, would this be an, sort of a, a good catalyst for us to say, hmm, really, our zoning doesn't allow us to get quite as many units in there as we might think as a community should be there. Should we change the zoning? Or maybe it already does allow all of that. Um, so that's one of the questions I just kind of want to get an answer to tonight. And then also um, diving into the different ways that we could achieve um, basically guaranteeing that any one of these proposals does what it says it's going to do. I personally also have a strong interest in um, historical preservation. And so um, in order to be able to vote affirmatively on any proposal, um, I, I would want um, some kind of guarantee that the, the building isn't going to be demolished. I understand there are different feelings about when to demolish things and when not to, and that this is really just my opinion. But having spent a fair amount of time in that house um, with contractors um, getting opinions on that, I felt pretty good about it at, at the end, that everybody that I showed did seem to think that it was salvageable. Um, I grew up on Screw Street, live very close to there now. So I spent lots of time in the house before it was abandoned. Um, it's definitely near and dear to my heart as one of the actual remaining affordable, well, not really anymore, but um, for a long time, it's been an affordable area of Camden where just normal people could raise a family. And yeah, I'm not sure that we have enough information tonight to make a, a final determination, but um, those are my thoughts at this point.
Okay. Jeremy, just to be clear, and because I'm no expert here, but that zone currently only allows an accessory apartment. Is that correct?
Correct, Bob. Village District, it, a lot size, single family, but we do allow a six hundred square foot accessory apartment. So you could, and here you have.
I just want to be clear on what it was right now because that's what Allison commented and I thought that was correct. Mark, did you have some comments? You're muted.
I think he's frozen.
Frozen?
Yeah, it said, it said the uh, it said the host muted me. My goodness.
I tried.
Yeah. I, I have some, some comments, uh, strong, and I have some strong feelings about it. Um, uh, I looked at all the proposals and I believe three of them, they're all interesting. They're all good proposals. They're all talking about affordable uh, housing. Um, but the, the one that interests me the most is one by Matt Heath and his wife, um, because they actually want to live there. Um, and they're the only ones that actually want to live in the house. And I think that's important. And I also think it's important based on who Matt is and what he does for this town and for the people of the town. Um, if, if you don't know, Matt Heath is a firefighter, is one of our four permanent firefighters. Um, he's done extra training for the town. Besides being a fighter fighter, he also volunteers for Coastal Mountain Search and Rescue Team, has been training with them. Um, and uh, extraordinary i- individual that I've gotten to know um, do this. And as he said in his proposal, one of the important things for him is, is, is he's newly married, wants to build a family, uh, but also living by the fire station is important. Because um, you know, having access uh, to when we get fire calls, emergency calls is really important. And we have so few people available to do that these days. I think the value that it brings to the town is important. Um, because not only is, is of the proposals, is he the one person that wants to live there? Um, but having him live there provides a value for the town that I think is unparalleled. Because you know, one of these days, having that access could actually save your life. And I think that's beyond the financial consideration. Um, I also understand that we're um, you know, he wants to, his decision is that he wants to remove the house and uh, and build a new one that fits in the town. And I understand Allison's situation. I'd like to see if he would reconsider um, consider his offer if he wants to just, just build the house, rebuild the house as it is. I'd like to see um, uh, if that proposal would make sense to him. Um, but I think affordable housing is important. But in this is a unique situation. We have somebody that really wants to live in the house and, and contributes to the town in a very big way, in a very important way. So that's, that's my feeling.
Thank you, Mark. Jenna?
Just very quickly, um, I, I certainly hear what Mark is saying. I think everyone has had great commentary. Allison and I grew up, I mean, we, her dad's house is right up the street. Um, I, we remember that house occupied, happy, great big English Mastiff on the porch. Um, it's, I, I've personally felt compelled by Dan's proposal. Um, and I would, I would like to hear more uh, about it. I think what Matt does for the town is phenomenal, but I also had a couple of just definitely uh, detail questions. And also if we're going to sell the property very inexpensively to someone who wants to live there, I think there are a lot of people that are in the same boat.
All right.
And can I, can I just make the comment? I see that Dan's on, but it's a bit awkward because I don't think the other, the other uh, people who put in proposals, I've got, I'm getting texts, I'm getting emails from them.
You're a hundred percent correct. I think that, I think just a, Jenna, I didn't want to interrupt you. Have you finished your commentary?
Yes, I did. Sorry.
I just wanted to say the same. I mean, it, a couple of days, first of all, the town has received lots and lots of emails from people supporting not only affordable housing, but also Habitat, Trumpet. I just wanted to get statement. We received them all. We read them all. And I, I, and I have a lot of respect for them and Dan and, and Pine Tree and, and uh, and the, the, the whole gang. But as, as I thought more about it, and just like I heard from my select board fellow members, I have a lot of questions as to what, so you have two choices here in my mind. You either select something with qualifications to clarify the questions we have, which is a very laborious process. Or we need to revert to some mechanism where all four participants can answer questions to the select board um, briefly, um, just to clarify, so we can make a, honestly, just a more uh, objective decision. That just, I just, because I, you know, I didn't want to put Dan in. Dan's, by the way, proposal was very well written. His letter was very well written. I have fewer questions than what he was proposing, but I have lots of questions of the other three. And to give, you know, uh, to Mark's point, to address this to a local firefighter, I think we owe them that to ask those questions. Um, and Pine Tree, is that the other?
Yeah, and that's just what I would recommend that, um, because it just, it doesn't sound like any of you are going to be necessarily ready to make a decision tonight. But I do think that all of you seem to have, you know, a lot more questions about all the proposals that you're going to need information on to sort of clarify your decision making. So.
But, but time is of the essence. We've had this property sitting around, rotting away a long time. I'm exaggerating, of course, but um, it, it does have good bones, as I think one of the proposals actually said. But um, what's the fastest way to do this? Should we schedule a workshop to bring all four in for fifteen minutes to have a discussion?
Yeah, I would recommend that you do it separately. You, you have them come and say, yeah.
I'm just saying, sequencing fifteen minutes each, you pick the time, each person, and we should schedule it and we shouldn't put it off because this decision has to be made.
Agreed.
Allison, Allison, there's a hand up.
So a, as much as I think that, you know, the select board is a, you know, a valuable source of, of questions and, and reasoning, I also um, I guess I, I would also like to see maybe some town staff involvement and just kind of sorting out the, the basics of being able to, to answer, you know, this is, this is how we would do a um, a, a deed restriction or the, you know, the viability of doing something like this with an entity or an individual.
Yeah.
Isn't um, in the business. I think that's kind of what appeals to many about Habitat is that it's a known entity. Okay, this is what they do, is they worry about affordable housing. Um, and so it, it wouldn't require as much due diligence. And so it it wouldn't require as much due diligence on our part to just kind of feel good about it. And but I don't think that that's necessarily the only way to go about it. I think that any number, it definitely appeals to me, the idea of being able to do a couple rental units, and if there are affordability covenants, and we can come up with a model that we can even suggest to to other homeowners to say, well, this is what the town of Camden did when we sold this property.
Right.
Want to follow this exact model when you fall, sell your property, that would be great. So if, you know, Audra could possibly.
Yeah, we can do, I'm just, okay, yes, it can be, it can be done. I just don't think what you're asking for isn't necessarily something that can happen incredibly quickly.
Now, if we start discussing grant deed restrictions.
Well, and I mean, and it can all be done, but it's just a matter of how quickly do we do? And I don't want to, this is going to waste more time, so I know what you want me to do.
No, I get it.
And go do it.
I don't want to saddle towns, I don't, I don't want to waste anybody's time, basically.
Well, it's just, it's going to be another big, not not big project, it's gonna.
Take time.
It's gonna take time, but it's fine. I know what you want me to do, I'll just do it.
No, 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 can I just take that back for a second? I think you're making a good point. Maybe a better way to do it would be to send, just just send another round of asking, letting, basically letting the applicants know that these are the types of questions that we all have. And factoring in the little thing about like, you know, if there were a zoning change, would you be willing, you know, do you think you could get more units in there? I'd like, you know, I'd like anybody that hasn't seen the building to to actually look at it, so that they can be in a position to tell us whether they think they would need to tear it down or not, possibly. But so maybe just just letting the the applicants know what the broad range is, so that they can be really well prepared. If they want to do research, to say, hey, I researched, and this is a model that I could pitch to the select board, rather than us having to come up with it, maybe that's.
I agree with Allison. Oh, I think all we're trying, I'm thinking, we're trying to do is to is to develop this list of questions, we provide the four entities, so that we can individually sit down with them for just some short time period, and just get their feedback on those questions. And I think it it shouldn't take us, the list of questions shouldn't be that long. I mean, for example, I mean, there are things like one proposal didn't talk about schedule, or whether they're going to tear the building down or not, simple question.
Right.
Just want to ask those kind of questions. Or, we're going to tear it down, why? You know, that just explain why, and what what are you thinking about to rebuild there? Just those general, general conceptual questions. So they're all four, kind of like the same level of information for from our perspective, that's all. So I don't want, yeah, I I when I heard you, I thought you were thinking about, you know, legal questions about, you know, grant deed and kind of restrictions that can, that can get lengthy.
Well, it's just the the building, a model that we want to use in, like, it would be wonderful if we had some sort of, and and that's why it's so tempting to just go with Habitat, because it's, they've got a model in place, we know it's going to be affordable housing, and, you know, anything above and beyond that, it would be, I think this is all, this gets back to the issues that we have around housing affordability, and there really isn't, other than Habitat in this area, there's no other sort of infrastructure, hard or soft, in place to help facilitate affordable housing.
All right. Well, I, yeah, I get you, I get you, and I don't.
And it's just like that whole conversation about creating something from whole cloth. And I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done, but I guess the more, we can, we can really go down the rabbit hole on this, and I just want to make sure that we're keeping it simple and answering the basic questions and.
I was, I, direct me, other select board members, but I was thinking of a list of, not a long list, but a list of questions we could develop to provide the four proposers, and have a brief discussion with each one, briefly, very brief one, to get their feedback on those questions. It might be six or eight questions. I I don't think it's, you know, trying to revise the whole process and define something for the future, it'd be nice to do that, but if we're, if we're going to go down that road, it's going to take a lot longer.
I mean, this wasn't an RFP, we didn't put out an RFP, we put out a request for expressions of interest.
Correct.
And that's exactly what we got. So it's it's a normal part of the process to just respond to these people and say, hey, give us a little bit more.
More information.
Right. Would would the board consider developing this list of questions, dividing two to four participants, and asking them to come into a brief workshop, 15, whatever time period each, to answer those questions? Is that an option in your minds?
Sure.
Yes, definitely, definitely. I think that's the best way to do it. The second that I began talking tonight, I felt very awkward. I think your proposal is excellent about the works.
I'm not, not, trying not to, we've got enough workshops stacked up to choke a rabbit, but on the other hand, I think this one requires the due diligence, because I I'm torn by some of the things mentioned about certain parts of proposal, and they all have their merits, but I just have questions to figure out which ones are, my mind is the best for the town, but the list of questions needs to be short. And we need to develop that with you. Maybe you take a cut at it, and get it to us, and then we can schedule a workshop to go over it this month.
Yes.
All right. Is that fair, board members?
Can we aim for this month?
I think it has to be this month. I would like to aim for, I'd like to aim for before the 15th, if we could.
Yes.
I mean, I know that's aggressive, guys, but, and I don't know, and by the way, also to Mark's point earlier on another topic, Taylor's not here, and I think, I know he feels very strongly about this area, but unfortunately, he had a work conflict and couldn't be here tonight. Mark, do you have a?
I was just going to suggest, because there are four people besides us, and we don't want Taylor's, instead of setting a date right now, maybe ask Audra to contact, you know, the individuals.
Okay.
And see if she can figure out.
I couldn't, I couldn't talk to Taylor's schedule to choke a rabbit, so I think that is more. That's what we'll do. Sorry, Dan, to drag you into this.
Yeah. Hey, I I just did have one thing to say. I, in the research that I, when I was doing research, I, the the property card for that house was quite, pretty old, some of it was off by quite a bit, I thought. I got ahold of Kerry last week, he came in to the property and reassessed it, and issued a new assessment on it. I want to make sure that, hopefully, it's gotten transferred to you guys, because the the old numbers on the on the on the previous assessment were way off with the condition the building was on in. So I want to make sure you have the right property card for the update on when you're when you're.
Okay, good point, Dan. We'll make sure that you get that information. We don't have it right now. It's evolving, but, okay, that's what we'll do on this item, and effectively, hopefully we can address it on the 15th, if we can do all of some kind of time basis. The last action item we have on our agenda is to address illustrious Camden Select Board schedule for calendar 21.
And I I was the one that brought up the problem last time, that it interfered with so many vacation dates, holiday dates. And I think, I guess it's Audra, I don't know who made the new schedule, but I think did an excellent job in making it work, so that, you know, we don't hit every single holiday. I think it's an excellent schedule, and I'm I'm for it.
Any other comments, Jenna or Allison? How about a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the proposed select board meeting, schedule of meetings for 2021.
Second.
Discussion goes in favor, Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And blah blah, 4-0, thanks, dang, good, we have a calendar for this year. Item five is an update on the established priorities regarding efficiency Camden. Jeremy?
Sure. I can start this, and Anita's also here.
Yeah, she's coming up. There she is, Anita.
Hi, Bob.
Can you hear us okay, Anita?
I can hear you great, can you hear me?
Anita, you look like you're the moonlight.
Oh.
I'm just kidding. Go ahead, Jeremy.
All right. So in your memo, I just explained what's kind of been going on for a while. The Energy Committee, primarily Anita and Brian Robinson and I, have been working on something like Efficiency Camden, and trying to brainstorm how to try to reduce energy use in town and improve efficiency, reduce greenhouse gases for not town buildings, but for homeowners and business owners. And there are really, you know, three different, what we've decided, or the committees decided, there's three elements to this program, and it would be education, I think is the number one, to develop and compile educational materials and and get those to people. And then number two would be to incentivize, and, you know, we don't, we're not a CDBG community, we really don't have low to moderate income LMI neighborhoods, so we can't qualify for CDBG funds, you know, which a lot of municipalities have used for these kinds of programs. So what we're thinking about is is really trying to push and educate about efficiency mains standards and their rebate programs. And at the same time, work with contractors that do this work to get the word out about the importance of these these programs. And then where possible, the idea of potentially using Town Trust Funds for the needy, which we use, you know, at certain times to assist property owners with, you know, certain issues that they may be having, whether it be housing, or food, or fuel, heating fuel, those kinds of things, which we've done. We've also assisted people with septic system issues that couldn't afford them. So there's kind of been a, you know, practice of using those funds in different ways. So one one idea is to use some of those funds to incentivize those that could take advantage of some efficiency main programs, and and just again incentivize them to locally and on top of the state programs. And then thirdly would be to work on developing our relationships with a nonprofit called Window Dressers, who I know quite well, and a gentleman in the community, Eric Evans, who does build window inserts, and our window inserts that go, I think most people know what they are, and try to get those to people that need them. And and again, use some funds that we have to assist those that can't afford them, that will will help get them into people's homes. And at the same time, people that can't afford them, you know, will provide the the resource for people to get them. And that's the idea. And we're looking to try to develop an education plan over the next month or so. And then window inserts, I've had a conversation with Eric Evans, he's willing, he's to participate and and help where he can. The executive director at Window Dressers, who I know, they're unfortunately not operational at the present time due to COVID, and this is a nonprofit that does community builds of these inserts, and kind of a neat, neat, neat program. But they're, they'd love to participate, they just can't do it at this time. But we can, this is an ongoing issue and an ongoing attempt to reduce energy use in town and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. That's the thought behind it, Bob. It seems pretty simple. What we were not trying to do was trying to create a program, if you will, you know, what other communities have done, where they've sole sourced a program to certain, one certain contractor. We're not trying to do that at all, we're just trying to get the word out there, incentivize people when we can, and educate them about the issue.
Great, thank you. Mark?
I've, of course, been a been a member of the Energy Committee, been the liaison for a long time. And I brought up the the window insert thing at the last meeting. And I think that's, that's my priority in terms of education is a really important thing, and people need to know about it, they need to know about heat pumps. I'm sure tons of people don't even know what a heat pump is at this point, don't know what they can do for the economy. But I would like to see us, we have some trust funds, I would like to see us move forward quickly with hopefully this window insert program, so that we can help people stay warm this winter. This has been a particularly difficult year for a lot of people. And if we can, you know, incentivize people, you know, when they're coming, looking for oil, looking for other things, if we can do some of these as well, I think it's to move forward. That's what I would like to emphasize.
Great. I mean, what else do you want to share? Allison, Jenna?
Anita?
Anita, Ms. Anita.
Hi there. Well, I think there's a lot that we can do working with those entities. I I think it's a great idea to have the trust funds be accessed for those for whom, you know, those who would qualify. There are other things, Seaman's brought up in your discussions tonight, the LED light bulb switch out, and certainly when you go to the hardware store, you can see that their efficiency main has already discounted the bulbs significantly, so it's just a couple of dollars to buy quite a few bulbs. So that's another thing I'd like to consider, if you're going to consider something quick and easy that would help in terms of energy use, then perhaps the town could buy a bunch of bulbs and have them available and distribute them to appropriate folks from somewhere in the town. It's just a thought.
I think that's a, that's a great idea as well.
Okay. Thanks.
I think.
Is any, Jenna, do you have any comment? Allison?
I'm very supportive of it, Ben.
Yeah, I I, I think all the ideas are right on. I think the devil's in the detail. And then, because my past experience, it's a great idea to use trust money to help those that need it. The question is how you define those that need it. That's what you all, I see Anita shaking her head, she's been through this before herself. Doesn't mean it can't be done, I'm just saying it's a real challenge. But I think it's, if we don't take step one, you don't get to step 50 for 10 years. So we have to do something. That window insert's a great idea, it's simple, they're, they can be had, we may have production problems, I didn't realize that the window dressers were shut down because of COVID, that makes sense that they wouldn't. They're the ones that did our building, right, Jeremy?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, they did this building, and they did a great job. So I, you know, I think you're on the right track, just get some, get some detail on paper and take a whack at it. Mark, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, I I know that Audrey's talked about taking whatever suggestions we have through the the committee that decides on the trust funds. And so maybe we task her for taking the ideas about doing some window inserts and LED bulbs to them, and see if they can include them in the program.
Yeah, I don't know, Mark, they're a real difficult group, it depends.
Yeah.
I I know they are, but just so that we have something to move forward, because it's energy savings, and and hopefully, you know, heat savings as well, and do a lot of things for people. So if we can move forward with those two things, right now, as as we develop other things, I just want to make sure we're doing something and not just talking about it.
Okay. One second, Allison. Jeremy has hand up first.
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, we're, the Energy Committee, I think they're moving forward. They want to develop education materials right off the bat, so I think if you just endorse them moving forward with that, the trust fund committee can figure out how they're going to do it, and we can start, start moving forward on this. I'm not sure you really need to make any formal decisions, Bob, but.
I don't think we're prepared to make any formal decisions, but Allison, you.
I don't think you'll need to in the end.
Yeah, just a, you know, larger thing on the the trust funds. We, you know, the town has been really fortunate to have a lot of this money donated, and it's grown over the years, and it has put the town in the, you know, position of being able to fund our own general assistance program, which gives us a lot more flexibility and so many great things. What we don't have the bandwidth for is to be, you know, our own nonprofit, as much as we might love to do that. We run out of available staff time to design really amazing programs, we kick around ideas all the time. But we do, you know, some of those funds are fairly flexible, some of them have, for the purpose of helping the poor and unfortunate residents of Camden, some of it's a little bit of older language. And, you know, some of them ask for kind of greater anonymity for the recipients, and there is a broad range of things that can be done with those, and it would be great. And I'm sort of saying this more for the benefit of anybody who may be listening. We we are in a position where we could fund really great proposals that help people in Camden do things and get through difficult times like coronavirus, or various things like that. So I do want people to be just in the community, a little bit more aware that these funds exist. The idea isn't that we're just like throwing money away, there is a, there is a process that you have to go through, and you have to be, for individuals, they have to be willing to disclose. For individuals, they have to be willing to disclose. Income and, you know, all kinds of documents. Like that, but we can also fund if an organization were to get together and. Say, wow, we really think we could do something to benefit more Camden residents. Would be great if we had proposals that came to us from the outside sometimes, it wouldn't require us to do our own. Thing because it just takes so much. Staff time, so.
Thank you.
You can do that too, but you're well represented, you don't have to, you know. Jenna and I are the select board representatives on there and then we've got Adra and Janice. And Jody. For the dialogue.
Okay, Anita.
I think that. I totally understand what Allison is saying about bandwidth, basically for. You know, making this equivalent of a nonprofit. Certainly, as we discussed at the Energy Committee, we could certainly see a lot that could be done. Including proactive outreach. To folks besides just trying to get P R out there for people to find. Although with the balkanization of media. Trying to figure out where people are going to find this information is a challenge in itself. Nevertheless. The issue really is about bandwidth and that's true for. Jeremy, the staff in the town office and that's also true for the volunteers on the Energy Committee. There's a lot of passion on the Energy Committee and a lot of interest. And I'm cer- certainly there's a fair amount that we can do in terms of direct outreach and P R. But I frankly am somewhat troubled by how. There's so much more that could be done than, than there is bandwidth for. And so I'd like you to think about that and how that might be solved. I'd also like you to think about. Again, I, my ask is that, that there be a staff member added to handle sustainability issues. Because this is no small matter and it, it's kind of, the, the issues are, you know, from the. The water level rising to, to the Seamen's work, to our commitment to the Global Covenant Mayors. There's a lot, there's a, there's a whole job worth of work. That needs to be done, particularly if we're trying to reach out to residents and businesses. And encourage them to reduce their energy use. So I, I take this opportunity in this discussion to ask you to please. Consider a staff position as other towns have done, that would handle these types of issues.
Okay, thanks Anita, Allison, go ahead.
Can I just, just really briefly say that I, for a long time, I was very supportive of I just. Adding another staff person. To do this because I see so many things that need to be done, rewriting our zoning ordinances to be more responsive to. Sea level rise. Any, any number of things. However, I also think, one of the things we've, we've talked about is trying to accomplish some of those goals. By partnering with organizations who. Have these things as part of their mission, that's part of what we've been working to get to. Do with Midcoast Conservancy, to have. Professionals who are in an office with other professionals who are working in the field of, you know, climate change adaptation. The atmosphere and the expertise that you can get from these organizations that are. Fully focused on these issues is just so much higher than. I think we can often get by taking somebody that's really interested in all these issues and shoving them in the Camden Town Office and telling them to work there. So I definitely, I'm highly supportive of. Additional resources to solve some of these problems, but I think we should be. Smart about how we use some of those. Funds.
Anita, go ahead.
Thank you. I also, on the same sort of topic. In terms of bandwidth. The Energy Committee is allotted seven members plus two. Two, what you call it, um. What am I trying to say, substitute or. Alternate, that's the word I'm looking for. So a total of nine. We have some outstanding folks, really, it's just an amazing group of people. And another person has come forward who has a tremendous amount of experience and actually has, is working for a vision. Now, but could lend a tremendous amount of expertise and. We're in the position of not being able to bring her on board because of this limitation. So talking about a staff member, talking about not being able to add a staff member, how about if we add at least one. Energy Committee member to our complement to bring it up to 10, including two alternates and one of those alternates is a student.
We, we're addressing, we're way behind Anita, I'm just addressing committees and boards and appointments, but we're gonna. We're gonna try to get that on the agenda for the 15th, for the next meeting. And I would, I told Mark earlier today, he's liaison and I was only looking to him for his recommendations, the boards, what. What should be added, subtracted, but honestly, any person can be in, in a committee meeting without having to be a member. That's, 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 you know that, but we'll, we'll talk more about that on the 15th.
Talking about, talking about voting members. Because frankly, this, this person who'd like to serve and the other people who are serving. I am tempted to, to step back and let them serve. And just step off the committee if, if we have to keep to the number that we have.
Well, thank you, I think we've finished on this item, I thank you all, but I think there were a couple of comments, Janice, you said on YouTube regarding this discussion item. Janice?
Yes.
I can't hear you. You're the host, I can't view you.
Your mic is very soft, Janice.
I can't, can't hear anything.
Can you hear me now?
You need to be a little louder.
Can you hear me now?
Not really.
I'm hearing a lot of back, so I can't hear. Somebody's got YouTube running or something.
I could read them if you wanted.
Okay.
Are they, the ones on this, on this item, go ahead, Jeremy, go ahead.
Yes. Brian Robinson. Please know, please let's not aim too low, we can move the window inserts forward. As the first phase while developing the larger guidelines between the Energy Committee and the Trust Fund Trustees. And then another one from Brian, if anyone on the select board is reading these comments, well, we got it.
Okay, thank you, and I agree.
Sorry, I just kept going.
Good, good comments, Brian, thank you. With that, we're gonna, thank you Anita, good to see you again, take care. Move on to our discussion items, which is the first is. There's some discussion about tasking the planning board to review our current shoreline zoning. Regulations in our zoning ordinance. Wants to introduce, Allison, you want to introduce this?
I would love to if you're, if you're, you know, amenable to that.
I'm amenable.
Great. So this stemmed from two conversations that I've had with, well, with lots of residents and then also. Bob about how to best present it, I'm not sure that. Shore, you know, shoreline zoning really totally encompasses it, but it gets at part of it. One of, there are two things that immediately come to mind as major issues with our zoning ordinance. And both of those have come to light in part because of the project being proposed in the harbor. I thought that Marina Chofler's comments about sea level rise. And the suggestion that we really need to put a moratorium on development within the. Shoreland zone or the sea level rise impact area until we can properly address that was. It seemed, it certainly struck a chord with me, we've got. Jeremy has articulated this well in planning board meetings and so we've got this whole issue of. You know, some shoreline issues because of sea level rise and then also. We've noticed certain things with just different areas of stream and river shoreline. Zones that might not be as well protected as we had imagined that they were. And really kind of wanting to take a, a broad look at how we can. Be more of a leader in that area. We can't task the planning board with 50,000 things, but. The other thing, so we've got this whole sea level rise thing that I really like them to be. Looking at and then also the harbor business district. I've been following somewhat carefully in the later stages, the planning board discussions. And looking at that district and what is allowed and so. For anybody who doesn't know this, the Harbor Business District basically encompasses mostly, you know, those Lyman Morse properties. Over on that other side of the harbor. And if you look at the, what it says the purpose of that district is. The purpose of the Harbor Business District is to preserve and maintain for the citizens of Camden, the character of Camden Harbor, including its scenic value. Used from the land, its accessibility to the public and its economic value for functionally water dependent uses. So that all sounds lovely, however, when you look at the permitted uses in that district. What comes to light is that, Jeremy said it during the, one of the planning board meetings. If somebody wanted to turn all of the buildings, the entire thing into a restaurant over there. That is a permitted use under our current zoning ordinance. And so. You know, some of the things that are, are happening right now, we are seeing a reduction in the. Total square footage devoted to marine uses. We are seeing a phasing out of water dependent uses in that area. And this is no, this is, this is what we've said is acceptable in, in this zone. So this is not in any way. Meant to say that Lyman Morse is doing anything wrong, they're also doing a lot of things to, to bolster that marine use and so. But. In looking at long-term planning, it's that, that was like really alarming to me because we're saying. We really want these parts of town to remain an avenue for water dependent uses. And so you look at like the boat sheds. And a lot of other things that how many of these uses now that are going in there are actually water. Dependent and so if we want to have any water dependent uses, whether that be renting. Paddleboards or kayaks or, or hauling in boats to be fixed. Do we need to, to actually protect certain areas and put it. Put it in our codes that only, you know, only a certain percentage of properties in X, Y, or Z area can. Have non-water dependent uses, do we want to look at a cap on restaurants? Do we want, do we want that side of the harbor to be just like. The, you know, the public landing side of the harbor? And I'm not saying that I have a perfect vision for what should or shouldn't be allowed. But it seems that in our zoning ordinance right now. We're at odds with what we say the purpose of that zone is and what we're actually doing. Because there's nothing in there that protects water dependent uses. In the future and if we're not going to do that in any areas of town. Anyway, so I would, I would just like to ask the, the planning board to look at.
Okay. Jenna?
I feel so strongly about this and I'm sorry, I'm having a little.
We lost Jenna.
Allergies, but. Am I okay, can you hear me?
I think we lost you.
Sorry, it's partially my voice, but. I, I just have to say that there's so much history and so many. Past boards have worked, I mean, obviously they haven't changed the zoning, it hasn't been necessary or examined it. To ensure that a balance remains. And I think it's, it's truly now or never with our harbor. I had some, I mean, I love Lyman Morse, I think they're a tremendous asset, this is nothing about them, it's just, as Allison said, it's a wake-up call. And it's a call to really envision what we want in the long term because it's going, it's. Going to disappear and that's the, the last opportunity. And so I, I would, I would really, really strongly like to move this forward with the planning board.
Jeremy. You're muted, Jeremy, did I mute you?
Okay, I, I appreciate the, the comments because that gives me some direction, I think, to share with the board. And I just want people to understand maybe a couple of things about shoreline zoning. The state has mandatory minimum shoreline zoning standards. And so we're, we are required to have an ordinance. That regulates things in a certain way, we, we can go stricter, we can change, change that. And for everyone. In addition, shoreline zoning, right, it regulates. Along water bodies, so rivers, oceans and lakes and ponds of certain sizes. Osmer Pond is under shoreline zoning. And what the state standards do allow and facilitate is for in built up areas like. The wa, you know, the waterfront and along the coming through for. To allow a wider range of uses, but I absolutely think it's an appropriate. Thing to do about to look at these things, I think we should look at the shoreline zoning ordinance, which then. Is included in the zoning ordinance and, and look at our floodplain ordinance as well. Because I think the floodplain standard of one foot above base flood elevation is really not the best. If you're looking at resiliency of buildings, that's not the best either. So I think it should look at, I'll look at, start looking at flood, floodplain ordinance, but the shoreline zoning piece, I, I get what you're saying. It makes sense and have some discussions with the planning board.
Allison?
I want to make sure, because this is important, I want to make sure I'm not misunderstood, that I do see these as two different issues. So specifically, I would say the Harbor Business District. I, I didn't hear, like, nothing that you said.
I get what you're saying, look at the uses of harbor, of the harbor district. And then broadly look at shoreline zoning issues.
Right, and may, and if I were to prioritize, I would say. That the Harbor Business District needs to kind of be looked at right away. And I mean, I'm hearing this from so many residents, they're like, what's going on? What do you mean there could be a whole arrest? And I'm, don't want anybody to think that Lyman Morse is proposing to turn the whole thing into a restaurant. But what we've done over the years always is relied, or often is relied on this idea that. Well, because the person that's there now isn't proposing this or that, or. You know, we can't, we can't do that, we can't just rely on, on goodwill and negotiation. And that is the doc, you know, when, when Lyman Morse goes to try to plan out what they want, want to have or not have. This is the document that we send out to the world saying, this is what's acceptable. And so any, nobody can actually even read that document right now and say. I don't think they want restaurant, you know, too many restaurants over there, too much retail over there. Do we want like the Gap and Olive Garden over there? Nobody would be able to read our zoning ordinance and know that maybe that's not quite what the, what the.
I think, Jeremy, probably the smartest thing to do is to draft something that you're going to send to the. Or read to the planning board and copy it to the select force, make sure we're on the same page with objectives, that's probably the best thing, otherwise. Words are dangerous, so then we could go around in circles for hours and if we don't document something with, and the planning board could go off on a tangent. Quick one, Jenna?
Just real quick, yeah, I, I just want to say, I would. For you to look at the history of, of all of this, particularly across the harbor. And if I, I mean, can ever try to point you in the right direction, please reach out.
You can.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I had to mute you guys, I'm. Cause it was causing, the conference room was causing all of the echo. So I did, I've just asked to unmute you. But you're gonna have to do that on your own. Sorry.
I'm good.
Well, not, not you. No, it was, I, I had to.
Better?
Oh, I, you know, Bob, one other thing, I will say, what we should also do as part of this process is look at the comp plan. Because that is important, because if the town overall thinks we should look at some changes to that area. Any changes we make really need to be supported by your comp plan.
Sure.
We'll look at what, how the comp plan reads about these kinds of things and harbor use. And if we need to look at that. use, and if we need to look at that as well, we'll look at that.
Yep, of course.
They're tied together.
Let's get something, when you get a chance, I know you're busy, but draft something up so we can make sure we're on the same page in terms of what the charge to the Planning Board is and what the priorities are.
Sure.
All right, moving on to our favorite managers and Select Board reports.
So I just have a quick update. We were, as all of you know, the replacement of the force sewer main from the C Street to the Bayview Pump Station needs to be rerouted. It currently runs under the harbor, and we had already, we had always planned to sort of replace it as the broader project to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant. As we were going through the engineering for that, we found that we can no longer run it across the harbor and we have to go overland with it. And we want to try and minimize any disruption to the downtown to the greatest extent possible. So where we can, we're trying to piggyback on the work that Main DOT is doing with the drainage project to make sure that that force main is in place, or portions of that force main are in place so that we can connect into it when it eventually does run overland and is ready to connect in. So to that end, we're going to need to close down Commercial Street, which is the small street that goes down to the public landing, and lay the new force main that's going to eventually connect to the Bayview Pump Station. And I've spoken to Tyler Smith about using their property so that any business owners or tenants in any of those buildings who have their access blocked up because of the MDOT construction project and who need to get to those buildings will have the ability to get through from behind, and we'll work with them on signage and rerouting everyone. And I'll put up more information on this, but I just thought it was important to bring up this part of my report.
Their deliveries out there also.
Yes.
Their sea dog.
Yeah. I believe actually they've shut down.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Right, we've got like Small under Gallery and.
Yes, yes, and the landing itself. Allison, you had to handle.
Yeah, I just decided to stop anyway. Oh, yeah, but I did actually have a question. How long did you say that we think this is going to take?
We think it's going to take a week to do this particular.
And where during?
Well, Ranger, so that's another benefit of piggybacking off DOT's work, is that Ranger, the contractor that's doing the work for the DOT will also be doing this work as well. It's for the town and we're funding it, but we've gotten a much better price as a result of piggybacking, and Ranger's already there and mobilized, so.
And to fund this, we're going to use?
The reserve funds, the wastewater treatment plant reserve funds that we've been putting away in anticipation of paying the debt service.
Have you had any feedback from business owners down there?
Dave Bolstich is getting in touch with them. You know, it's, it is going to be an inconvenience, but I really hope that, you know, this is going to minimize any future disruptions by doing all of this work at once together.
Oh, so did we get confirmation that people can access it? Is it in the works, being able to access through the back of Sharpsworff and?
I spoke to Tyler Smith this afternoon, and he said that we could reroute traffic through there, and he would make sure that some of those parking spaces were cleared so that there's a clear path, so that people can access the public landing through Sharpsworff and that entrance on Bayview Street.
Access and address.
Yes.
Very narrow area.
Yeah. Great, so what's our, so we're going to put something on the website right away, put something on Facebook?
Facebook.
Really reach out to?
Yes.
The contact, the appropriate contact person for all concerns, inquiries, is that you or is that?
That would be, Dave Bolstich will be able to answer the detailed questions about when everything starts and ends and what's going on, so I think he would be a better person because he's going to be the one sort of troubleshooting anything that comes up in the course of the project.
And just general grievances, I hate the town.
General grievances, they can come to me.
But Dave Bolstich will go with those, or the.
There's a fine line between the two.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do general grievances, Dave can answer any specific technical questions.
Any other questions? Anything else, Audra?
I would, I wanted, I just wanted to emphasize that because I think that's sort of very important to get that out.
And that's, it could be a red flag.
Yes.
Okay, Select Board, Mark?
I don't really have much today except to, again, pay attention.
Mark, did you say that again?
It's, you need to be muted in there because it's causing this weird echo in your.
It's an echo.
We can hear him fine, but then when you start talking, it gets all echoey when, sorry.
Well, you got them to stop talking, Allison, wow. As I said, I don't have much to say, except of course, be safe, you know, we're watching the COVID numbers, they've been tremendously advanced. We seem to have leveled off a little bit here in Knox County, hopefully we'll be good. Hopefully Thanksgiving, people took care and did their distancing and their masking. Again, the one thing that I see is kids, when they get out of school, hanging together without masks, and so please talk to your children. Let's, let's keep it as safe as possible. We're just a few months off from vaccines, and hopefully by this time next year, things will be, will be in a wonderful situation, it'd be a better life for a lot of people. Just be safe and be careful. But Bob, we can't hear you now because.
Maybe somebody should just go. He's probably indicating that he wants anybody else who wants to give a Select Board report to give one. Is, I can.
Allison, you're up.
I can see it in his eyes. I'm, we work so well together, can you see this synergy? I'm going to pass because I feel I've done a lot of speaking tonight and don't have much else to say.
What did you do with Allison? Where did she go?
All about the high tides, of course, but, you know.
Jenna?
I am also going to pass tonight. Just, I would echo Mark in that we had the deadliest day in the state of Maine as far as COVID is concerned today, and I just think it's really important that we all be safe and that we all have good, happy holidays, as amended as they need to be. And I also want to just really put it out there, support local businesses this holiday season. It may be difficult because of the construction, things, you know, may not look like they do always do, but a lot of businesses have made remarkable pivots, in my opinion, to be more accessible, to do curbside, to do web, and follow them on social media, do all, as much of your shopping locally as you can, the businesses really need it, and restaurants and too, gift certificates and all of that. So that's my little plug for today.
Thank you, Jenna. I'll just say, I did some Christmas shopping in downtown Camden today at a local retailer, and very happy that I did. Bob just texted me that we make a motion to adjourn, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob, we're taking a vote. Aye for me.
Aye for me.
Aye for me. Oh, what about Bob? Bob's a yes too.
And Bob's a yes. So I believe we're adjourned, thank you all, have a wonderful night, and.